Certainly for Kansas, but nationwide, so like to acknowledge that. Like to also welcome everybody who's in attendance, also the folks listening online. And today, Dr. Mary Skaggs is here today. We'll welcome you back again today from Baker University. Have one additional student teach you today, so if I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you to stand up and introduce yourself and tell us where you're student teaching.
Hello, my name is Dennis Russell. I am student teaching. Oh, to you guys. Sorry about that. I'll talk to everybody.
I'm student teaching in Olathe right now. I'm doing physical education. Right now, I'm at Briarwood Elementary. And in the second half after spring break, I'll be at California Trail Middle School.
Very good. Well, thank you. We appreciate your choice of professions and good luck with your rest of your student teaching. And then next year, hopefully, you'll be gainfully employed and teaching in a school. So, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you again for the luncheon for the others last month. And just feel so important that they see all experienced this, so that's why you're having to put up with me a second month in a row. So, we want to bring him back.
We're glad to have you back, Mary. We appreciate you coming and bringing your students. Also want to expect, express our appreciation. We met this morning, I think everybody was there. We met with the Kansas Association of Independent and Religious Schools for breakfast this morning. Had a nice conversation with them. And as I will read our vision statement here in a minute, we talk about representing or leading the school in the success of each student, and we mean all, each student, and our public school students and our private school students also. So, we had a nice conversation with them this morning, so we appreciate that. The mission of the Kansas State Board of Education is prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. Our vision is for Kansas to lead the world in the success of each student. At this time, if we please pause for a moment of silence. And if you would now please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're also, if we take, we want to take a look at the agenda. We're going to have a revision, excuse me, to a consent agenda item, and that is in your packet, board members. So, if you want to look at that, you certainly can, but it will be consent item 21J, which is a contract bid process for Microsoft Academy and computer science certifications. The new dates listed on that align with the school year, not the calendar year. A copy, like I mentioned, the copies in the, in the schedule, in your packet. So, are there any other changes to today's agenda? If not, I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, Dina, a motion to approve, second?
Motion to amend.
Okay. Okay, Steve?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to offer the opportunity to, board members, to discuss very briefly the Value Them Both Amendment that's being proffered in the legislature. I think we ought to discuss it briefly and lend our support. I'd like to make a motion that we add that to the agenda, please.
Which, which item?
The Value Them Both Amendment.
I'm sorry, I still didn't, the what?
It's, it's an amendment, it's, it's a proposal to amend our constitution. And it goes under the title of Value Them Both.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we'd need a second to approve that. Michelle? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Just clarification, is this a motion?
Just for an amendment, not the approval of the agenda.
Sorry, when you were looking for a second, I didn't know if you were looking for a second for Dina's motion or...
No, this is for this amendment.
The amendment, okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Why are we voting for?
The amendment. An amendment.
Okay.
One, two, three, opposed?
Wait, count me as four.
Count you as?
I'm voting for.
Voting for, discussing it?
Discussing.
Okay, so I had voting for discussion, three. You voting for or against?
For.
Four, okay. Opposed? Four to six, against. The no's were Jim McNeese, Michelle, Dombrowski.
No, no, no.
Yes, we were the yeses.
They were the affirmative. The, the others of us were against. Got it?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Got it? Okay, now do I have a motion? Dina, move to approve the agenda as it is? Do I have a second for that? Jim McNeese, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Eight to two. Okay, January minutes, are there any corrections or addition to the January minutes? If not, have a motion to approve the January minutes. Dina, second. Jean Clifford, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that looks like a 10-0, thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Watson, welcome. Glad to have you here for a February meeting.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. Thank you, thank you. I want to spend some time with you this morning talking about some, some ways that I've been thinking about how we organize education, and then we think about the education of a young person, even going on into young adulthood. And it really represents my thinking as we try to help school districts and communities really wrestle with this. How do we help every, every student be successful? So, some of this I, I started with you last month. I'm going to go into a little bit more depth in a couple of age groups. But as we think about, how do we help students become more successful? Jean and Kathy and I were with the Coordinating Council. As you know, that is made up of representatives from Kansas Board of Regents, representatives of the Kansas State Board of Ed, and representatives from business highlighted by the Kansas Chamber of Commerce. And we were meeting yesterday, and it was emphasized, and I'm going to look to Jean and Kathy, because I don't want to misspeak, but it was emphasized over and over, business is demanding of us in a shortage of both quality and quantity, I think they, I think Alan said that a couple of times, that they need a combination of soft skills, hard skills, with an emphasis on the soft skills. Am I saying that correctly? And so, as we think about success, it's very easy to think about one measure, hyper, but you have to look at this in its total. And I'm going to share with you just some thinking as we might think about that developmental process. So, I shared this with you last time, and you're already going to see, if you're really astute, you're going to see that as of last night, I changed something on this slide. And it really comes, Jean, from your comment. And it, and it was really my thinking that made me shift this. So, really, from the time a student is born, or even, even prenatal care, to the time a student starts to enter into young adulthood, we have some oversight when a school, when a student's in our schools, public or private, and we have some influence in those areas where they're not directly in school. Jean made the comment in our Coordinating Council yesterday, and it's really true, that a student starts that transition to young adulthood generally around their junior year. And so, I changed that age from 17 to 16. It really is the last two years of high school and the first two years out as we think about that. And as we think about that space, because I'm going to really talk about the younger ones, we think about that space 16 to 20, I think it's incumbent upon us to really look at what are the needs of Kansas, what are the needs going to be, not in 2020, that's, that's, certainly we have to meet those needs, in 2030, 2025, 2030. And it's clear, it's clear by every evidence we can look at, both anecdotal and quantitative, that the more education you have after high school, the better you tend to do. So, as we think about stackable credentials, an associate degree, bachelor, masters, PhDs, professional degrees, we have to accelerate that, what was 44%, now 48%, even higher. All right? And then, there's lots of things that we're going to have to do in that space, keep Kansas kids here, or have them return back to Kansas after maybe a short journey outside of Kansas. But we, but more education above high school is going to be the new norm in the new economy. It just is. And that doesn't necessarily mean, again, every kid has to go to a four-year degree-seeking program, even though we need an abundance of those two. So, I just want to point that out. The Coordinating Council, I think, is going to do a lot of work on that, and I'm anxious to see what comes out of that work. We asked at our annual conference, and at the KASB Annual Conference, so those are two large conferences, and we said, if you look at these stages, and you can see, these are the old age groups, but if you look at these stages right here, and you think about success of young people, and making sure that we're helping young people be successful, rank order those developmental stages on what's most important to get to that. Does that make sense? Kansas, the annual conference, and then KSB, so our two largest kind of conferences. Educators by and large, school board members and educators which would attend those conferences said, all right, birthday age four, closely followed by ages five to nine, would be the most important to reach that goal of helping kids be successful. That's what they said. Now, you need to invert that with where we spend dollars, both on the school side and as a community. You need to invert that. And there's some easy reasons for that. If you're going to run an FFA program, have a welding program, there's equipment, it costs, costs more money. But I want to just take a little bit of time and, in a very brief time, highlight those two developmental stages, but give you a framework that I started to give you last month about how we would think about this birth to four, ages five to nine timeframe, and some things for you to think about as we, again, wrestle with this issue of how do we help every kid be successful. When we asked the same group of people, okay, of the things the state board has asked you to work on, where are you putting your time, effort, and money? And they said, social, emotional growth, and academic preparation. And then, all the other things tended to follow. Again, same audience, KSB audience, and annual conference. So, a group of educators said, this is really where we're trying to put our, our emphasis. And I was in a meeting recently in Wichita where a lady said to me, taught kindergarten. And she said, I taught kindergarten for a number of years, and then I retired, she smiled, because I wanted to raise my kids, and I was out of education for 20 years while I raised my, several kids. And now, I have returned back to education to teach kindergarten. This is, this was her second year back on her second stint. I said to her, we talked about the academic challenges, right, of that age group, I said, what's the biggest difference you see in that 20-year span? And she said overwhelmingly the social and emotional needs of kids. I have kids mentally ill that I did not see in my classroom, same school district, 20 years earlier. Academic, she said, yeah, there's a little bit more gap, but that was, there was already a gap. It's that issue, she said, that really makes it difficult. So, what do we, should we look at in the birth to four area where we have some oversight and influence? As you look at these developmental stages, I would ask you to think about these questions. What does the research tell us about that age group? What data do you need? What partnerships? And you can look at that. I'm not going to go over all those with you. I'm going to highlight a couple of these, you know, but, but what we, what we know about this area, how many of you remember the mid 1980s when President Reagan asked his, the First Lady, to take on the war on drugs? Do you remember? And do you remember what the slogan was?
Just say no.
Just say no. And do you remember what the, what the famous commercial, I'll say it's famous, that, that, you had a pan, and you broke an egg, this is your brain on drugs. Remembering it was fried? Because the best research in that era said, you're born with billions of brain cells that develops pretty early in life, and after about 21, they just start dying off, and they don't recreate. And if you do drugs or, you know, some other things, you can destroy those and, you know, and faster. Then unfortunately, or fortunately, we started, you know, several things started to happen. One, young people, veterans of war, unlike the Vietnam, Korea, World War II and before, started living through some fairly significant trauma where they would have died in previous wars. So, from, from Desert Storm all the way. And we learned that adults even, at age 40, could lose half of their brain, and the other half tried to recreate itself. It wasn't, it didn't ever get there, but we, it tried to relearn what it lost. Functional MRI showed us that, we watched people go through this. President Trump, in his State of the Union, talked about born, just not too far from here, the most earliest prenatal baby that would have died, and, right, in 1985, but now lives. And we look at functional MRIs, and we now know that the area of birth to four and five to nine is tremendous growth of brain cell development and learning, but we also know it can happen later, all right? But just to give you one example of what does the research tell us? We have lots of research now in this space leading to life outcomes. Look at the Perry Preschool Project, which is the largest-running preschool project. I'm not going to share all that data with you, but those people are now grandparents, all right? And look at their subsequent generational life outcomes, which is pretty phenomenal. This is just one piece. Essential reading and math skills, which is one component to be successful, is up to 10 times less expensive focused from birth to five than even from kindergarten to fifth, much less from fifth to 12th, right? Now, we know that, we know that. And we're going to know more about this space as, as technology and research even gets better. We know that. And so, that's why the Kansas Legislature and you have said, hey, let's fund all-day kindergarten, let's talk about how we engage communities in this space. So, I want you to think about, again, all of these, we think about this in all these developmental areas. So, this is the summer loss, all right? This is 20 years of research, longer than that. There's kindergarten. And as I was talking to the young lady, you talk to anyone in any one of the school districts you represent, at age five, there's a gap. See the two lines? This is an academic chart. There's a gap between students when they enter formal schooling in kindergarten, always has been. You can layer on that a social-emotional gap, which isn't as easy to quantify on a chart like the reading and math scores, but you can look at that. And then, look at this line, because that's the gain that's made in school over the course of the year. Students that come in high, gain, and the students that come in lower, gain, at almost an equal rate. What doesn't happen is that the gap doesn't tend to close. And then, look what happens over the summer. The students of more affluent parents grow, and the students of poverty go down, and then the gap starting in first grade is now wider than it was. This is just academic, and we can't make the claim, but maybe you could say, I wonder what happened social-emotionally in that same? We've known this. We've known this. So, I want you to give this some thought. There's 365 days a year, there's 110 weekends, and there's 11 federal holidays. If we were to take off, two additional days for every federal holiday. So, think about Martin Luther King, which is on a Monday, right, recognized on a Monday. What if you took Friday off and Tuesday off, combined that? That would leave us 222 days of instruction available in the, in a given year. We have school districts that are now going 141 days a year. That happened as budgets got cut. This is, none of this is a conspiracy, right? That happened because there had to be a response to, to not having money in the budget for instruction. But we're going to have to look at not only how we go about engaging our communities, engaging instruction, but eventually, we have to look at time, right? Ben, I've never known a good drama teacher that wanted less time, right? I've never known a good band director that came to the front, I want less time with the kids. So, we're going to, as we talk with our communities, we're going to have to emphasize time is going to be one of the elements, along with the quality of what we do as we try to work going forward. So, very quickly, I'm going to jump to ages five to nine, and Steve and I had dinner last night, and we talked a lot about age nine. Age nine, again, if you think, birth to age nine, that's, again, not that you can't learn after age nine, because you can, not that you can't learn after age 60, because you can, but the return on investment and the time gets longer. It just gets, it gets, so if we look at this strictly from an, from a academic standpoint and social-emotional, this is out of the University of Chicago, look at chronic absenteeism, and look what happens with the likelihood a student will graduate from high school simply based on those students that miss more than 10% of the days of school. And notice like between 10 days and 15 days, look how significantly that falls, from 73% chance to 57%. Couple with that, as we think about, but we need kids to graduate high school and go on to earn, we call that second piece of paper, this data really drops. So, we ask schools, starting in kindergarten, run a two-week running total of the 10 days, and any student missing more than two days of those 10 days in school, we need to be intervening immediately with families of, why is this happening? Because that data is important. Chronic absenteeism, as you talk to school districts, that's the data you want to look at, not their average daily attendance. How many students are missing more than 10% of the days they're in school? I also want to share this with you, because this puts in context the, the academic graphs I'm going to share. You might remember, in the No Child Left Behind era, 2002 to 2012, we had almost 90% of kids hit a level called proficient. I want you to store the word proficient, the word grade level, the word on-grade level. We misuse those terms a lot. Use the word literate too. And just think, I'm going down to the donut shop, and I'm going to engage who, you know, everyone in my community about this discussion. Education next. In the year 2009, kind of the height of No Child Left Behind, said to us, your standards, Kansas, rate a D. Now, you could argue, they said it's not rigorous enough, not rigorous enough. Lots of kids proficient, wouldn't, that's a, that's a misuse term, because it's not proficient and grade level are not the same. Same organization in 2017, the last time they released data, said you now get an A, you're sixth most difficult in the country. All right? Those are cut scores and standards. So, if you raise the standards and you raise the cut scores, what happens? Less students who used to be scoring proficient now score proficient. I'm going to show you some things that are interesting. So, that's, that's education next. You can criticize that or like that, depending on your point of view. This is the United States Department of Education Statistics, and now you're looking at the NAEP equivalent to the eighth grade reading, and I'll share with you math also, standards. Notice on the far right, who has, according to them, the most difficult reading standards in the country, Kansas. They, they say Virginia has the least rigorous eighth grade reading standards. And if you moved Virginia across horizontally to Kansas, you could say, in our four levels, that maybe if you were at the top of Level 1 in Kansas standards, you would be proficient in Virginia. Because proficient is a, is a moving term. Grade level is a term that's left over from over 100 years ago. What we set out to do, we asked teachers, what is the level to do academic work to get ready for Washburn Tech, or to go to KU, any kind of post-secondary? And Kansas teachers said, that's the level. It's not to try to be number one in the country on rigor. It was, that's the level to be academically ready, and you know, we've equated that to the ACT. But I want you to understand, if you score a Level 4 on our state assessment, what's the predictability, what's the score of predictability that you'll, that you'll score on the ACT? What's the range? 30 to 36. That's in the, that's in the 96 percentile of all students that take the ACT in the country. Again, not because we want to be the most difficult, because we want to assure, Michelle, if your kids go on to post-secondary, they're academically ready. Now, that doesn't mean they go to class, that doesn't mean they participate, some of those other skills, academically. That's reading, that's mathematics. Kansas is on the far right. Now, we have to constantly look at that. Again, we don't, we didn't set out to be the most difficult, or we set out to have a standard that was clear, and that has now occurred. So, I want to share with you, these are third grade English Language Arts results. This is age nine, Steve. This is age nine. All right, the green, the lime green and the blue represent levels three and four. You can start to see a leveling out, but what is Level 2? Well, in our definition, it's not ready for post-secondary work completely. What we do know, though, is that if you couple Level 2 with really good soft skills, that student will make it through post-secondary. They just will. We've got great examples of kids that don't score 21 on the ACT that go to college and do fine if they show up, and if they have persistence, and they have a whole other set of skills, right? Textbooks are tended to be written at Level 2. But, but, but if you use the word proficient or grade level or literate, by the way, you can be literate in Level 1. And you certainly can't say kids are failing, it's not, they're not achieving at that level. That's language arts, there's mathematics. Now, the trick here is, we do want to eliminate one, and we want to start moving as many kids into Levels 3 and 4 by age nine, in that sweet spot where we get the biggest bang for our buck, right? Not that we can't catch kids up, but that's where we want to move. That's going to have us take a look at, again, social, emotional, and academic needs in context as, as we go forward. One of the ways we can do that is encourage us to be bold in some thinking about the way we think about schooling. It does work well for a variety of kids that tend to come from stable home environments. The more unstable that we find, the less our structure tends to work well, and we've got some schools trying to figure that out. And if you want to see some really interesting results, you can look at Andover, you can look at Beloit, you can look at Dayton, and there are several others that are, that are doing some remarkable things. And those are, I mentioned those because they're very different, they're suburban, rural, and very different socially economically. So, that's a snapshot of thinking about developmental structures differently, and what we might need to do. We all know this, the only criteria to go to kindergarten is that you're five years old on September 1. And that gap, wherever we draw the line developmentally, kids are always going to have a gap. Our job is to adjust to that and make sure then that we use time and really good content to help accelerate that success. Madam Chair, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate the report. Interesting data today. We may end up wanting to extend the conversation sometime and actually put it as an agenda item. I think there's a lot of food for thought there. I think we'll go on to the Citizens Open Forum. We have a number of speakers today. Thank you, Commissioner, for your thoughts. I now declare the Citizens Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education Meeting open at 10:30. The State Board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. The State Board asks speakers to identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent if applicable. The State Board will also ask each speaker to focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Any board questions will be for clarification. Our first speaker will be Representative Steve Hubert, followed by Brian McLendon. So, Representative Hubert, welcome. I'm pretty sure you probably have to get over, have a committee meeting here pretty soon, so, we're glad to have you. Welcome to the State Board of Education Meeting.
Thank you. Three minutes. I can't do it. All right. I, I, I hope they're passing out. Just, again, my primary goal, if you cut to the very end, is working together in a collaborative way. I think we've taken some positive steps over the last few years. Randy and I have worked well together, and going into my next point, I am very thankful for the hard work. I know at 11:30 you're going to be hearing on finalizing the computing science. It's an issue that we heard in my committee, and then the task force has done great work. It's above and beyond anything I might have expected even when I had hearings last year on the computing science issue. So, thank you for that. Dyslexia and bullying are other issues that you've worked on. There's a lot of things that we have that we can work together on, and I'm very thankful that we are moving in that direction. I think for, for a while, maybe that wasn't always the case, but it's my goal, and even in my committee, to having my committee practice just the, the common courtesy of agreeing to disagree, finding the common goal of working together for, best for our kids. I know you do that, and we do that, and we can work together. I have a list of some topics we're working on with hearings and, and things that are coming before my committee this year. One of them, when Randy and I met at the beginning of the session, we're having a hearing today on civic government, and that's why I'm being as patriotic as possible today. I'm very excited to announce that Attorney General Derek Schmidt is going to be coming over and testifying on behalf of that bill. I believe that we have the opportunity on this bill, and I hope that you guys finish up at 1:30. Anybody that would like to come over and hear more on that, come over and join us. I think it'll be a good hearing. And I think my bill is written in a way with the citizenship test, that you guys are updating your sci, I mean, your civic standards right now, and I think we can work together so that this would be an either-or proposition as far as even you developing your own test or the citizenship test could be used. That's my goal, to help just do something in a small way that can move the needle on, on how we teach citizenship, how we teach government, and how we help our children to have a, a passion for what our government's all about, getting involved. Apathy is a huge problem in our, in our state and our country. You know, apathy is probably right up there with just, just the whole civility of politics. In our country, it's a huge problem. In Kansas, not so much, but it still is. I, I thank you. There's several other good topics on there that, that we can work together on. I'm going to go ahead and stop there, you know, if there's any quick question. If not, I don't know if you do questions or not, but thank you, and I appreciate. In closing, I just want to honor the memory, not the memory, but the friendship I have with Ken Willard, former board member, longtime board member. He's, he and I were great friends, did a great job here, and I hope, I've heard that he's doing okay, but, you know, and that's, I'm, I'm glad he's enjoying his retirement from the board.
Representative Hubert, thank you. Thank you for coming over. We always honor the opportunity to hear from representatives, and I think we've probably got a lot of good things here that we can work together on, and we appreciate that.
I think so, and like I said, even if anybody has the chance to come over and would like to speak more, I'd be glad to, after the meeting, to sit down and talk with anybody that has the time and interest.
Okay, great. I think, Mr. Porter?
I just want to commend you, Representative. We, we met this summer in...
Oh, this fall, in San Diego.
Yeah, and, and had some really good conversations about things we could do together. I really appreciate you being here, I appreciate your willingness to work with us.
I, I like to say we bonded.
I think so. We're new best friends, yeah.
Well, I think so. I, I think, you know...
But anyway, I believe, you know, we've, we've been trying to work and build relationships for a long time, and, and I want to just commend you and tell you, I thank, thank you for doing that.
It's important to me, I have several colleagues here that used to serve in the legislature that I consider friends and worked with, and, and again, for those of you that I don't know, I look forward to getting to know you.
And we can work, we can work much more effectively together, and I appreciate your willingness to do that.
Yeah, well, I agree, and Randy, I'd love to get on my counter again, we have some things we can talk about. All right.
Thank you very much, Representative Hubert, and who knows, Mr. Porter may be over this afternoon, we don't know. Okay, Brian McLendon, and then after that will be Lisa Roberts-Prophet. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. My name's Brian McLendon. I am working at the University of Kansas as a research professor. I'm actually more representing myself, because I have some very broad interests in this category of topics, as you'll hear. I grew up in Lawrence, and I went to Hillcrest West and Lawrence High School. I graduated in 1982. In 1981 and 82, I was able to take computer science at Lawrence High, even though, you know, computers were very big and painful to use at the time. We had a teletype connected to the KU computer, and I was able to program in BASIC and FORTRAN. And so, I was able to take two classes there in fall and spring. And that led to my career. I went to KU, became an electrical engineer, graduated in 86. I spent 10 years building graphics supercomputers, silicon graphics in Jurassic Park and that whole story, but then started a company called Keyhole. And we built a product that was acquired by Google in 2004 called Google Earth. I built a team of 13 programmers when we were acquired by Google, up to about 1,000 programmers, and about a $20 billion worth of valuation at Google during that time. I then went to Uber, built a maps team, worked on self-driving cars and some other cool stuff, but decided to come home to Kansas, because I actually care a lot about this place and love living here. And I became a research professor, but I also started working with startups and companies in the area. I built a, I built KSvotes.org is one project which you may have heard of, but I also built this thing that we just launched called TechMap Kansas, which maps all of the technology employers in the state. And we, I found 660 companies in the state that employ computer scientists and engineers. All of those companies need programmers. More importantly, I found 200 startups, and for those of you who don't fully realize it, job creation in the state and in the country only comes from startups. If we do not have good startups that do not turn into big and bigger and huge companies, we won't have the employers for the next generations of Kansans, because all existing companies in the country, net job growth is zero. So, how do we get more computer science in the state? One of our challenges is we don't have enough women in computer science. We get about 25% or so, maybe up to 30, in the first year of college, and by graduation, it's 25. And in industry, it's down to 17 or 18%, maybe even 16 in some companies. That's a huge opportunity to increase computer science and build up the economic development of the state. I've also been working with the University of Kansas to try to get graduate students to help teach remotely around the state of Kansas, possibly using Green Bush and their telepresence efforts, but we'll use whatever method we can to get more teaching of computer science throughout, because it shouldn't just be that the big high schools in the big districts have computer science. Everybody should have it, because our state needs it. Thank you very much.
Brian, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments and your work. Sounds, looks very valuable. Lisa Roberts-Prophet, and then Amy Newton is next?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members. My name is Lisa Roberts-Prophet. I'm the Executive Director of FlagshipKansas.Tech. We are the Technology Association for the State of Kansas. This was really important to me this morning. I'm typically an extemporaneous speaker. Thank you to my speech teacher in high school for teaching me to do that, but there are so many important points I wanted to get across in a couple of minutes, I've decided to actually read from my notes today, so forgive me for doing that, and please do not tell my speech teacher. I'm a confident decision-maker. I learned how to make decisions at a very early age. I was fortunate, because I was entrusted with making decisions, and I was supported with opportunities to learn about my decisions. I learned that no decision was made in a vacuum. The world around me was impacted by my choices. I learned how to be patient, observe, and do my research. I learned how to adjust my approach when things around me changed, and I learned from the decisions I made. Do you know what I would love to see? More confident decision-makers. And I know that I'm not alone. In my role as an executive director of a nonprofit, I have a lot of responsibilities. One of my main responsibilities is understanding workforce challenges. I can't count the number of hiring managers, HR directors, and business owners that relay each day how frustrated they are that they can't find employees. When I ask what employees they are looking for, what roles they have to fill, I have quickly heard and repetitively heard that it's not about the job, it's about the individuals. What are they really looking for? They're really looking for an employee that doesn't have to be told every move to make, someone that takes initiative, someone not afraid to lead, and someone not afraid to make decisions. They want more confident decision-makers. So, why talk about workforce and their challenges after all this is a Board of Education meeting? Because for me, the answer lies in education. I learned to make decisions in life by using a process familiar to all of you, the scientific method. The scientific method, if we want to go back to Webster's definition, are the principles and procedures for the systematic pursuit of knowledge involving the recognition and formulation of a problem, collection of data through observation and experiment, and the formulation and testing of hypotheses. Let me state it again. I learned how to make decisions in life based on the scientific method. I can't turn back time and give our workforce the childhood that I experienced. That would probably solve it. But what I can do is ask that we provide our students, our future workforce, with the opportunities to learn how to become more confident decision-makers. And we can do this for them now, with broader and earlier exposure to the scientific method. The scientific method is ingrained in computer science and the process of coding. Computer science and coding immerse students in an environment designed to develop curiosity and patience, as well as opportunities to learn about choices and decisions. In the vein of the scientific method, I believe the conclusion of this work would be this, that the broad exposure of computer science in our state through policy adoption and support will result in more confident decision-makers. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments and your thoughts. Okay. Next, Amin?
Anita Newton. Is that me? Anita?
Anita?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
You can call me Amy, it's okay. Can you guys hear me?
Newton? Newton? Yes, yes, very well. And after you would be Dave Trabbert. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anita Newton. I am the Chief Innovation Officer at Community America, which is a credit union, and I'm speaking on behalf of the KC Technology Council. I also have a startup called Mighty Goods that's a consumer product company. And I am here to talk about the, the standards before you about computer science. And I'm in a really unique position, because I stand at the intersection between math and computer science. So, I was raised as a math kid. I grew up in Wichita, Kansas. My dad was a math professor at Wichita State for 30 years. And so, while most dads were out, you know, throwing a football with their kid or riding a bike, I was doing math with my dad. So, you knew those books that you have in textbooks that on the back, there's the additional reading, that's what I was doing with my math, with my dad every Saturday. And I took a lot of math, and so did my twin brother. We went up to Calc III, and it was really incredibly helpful for me. And I passed this love of math to my children, and they, you know, did athletics, and we won Citi twice. The third year, we lost because of a misleading question. That is a topic for another question, another commission. But they're in high school now, at Shawnee Mission East in Prairie Village, and they are taking math. And it has been a wonderful thing. But I have to tell you, as I'm now in the workplace, I have come to the realization that math is necessary but insufficient for our kids to win in the world. And I come at that realization through the lens of three areas. First, as an employer. So, like I mentioned, I work at a credit union, not what you think is the bastion of technology, but for us to survive, for us to win in the world, we have to, and I was talking to our CIO and CEO last night, we have to build a technology stack that will help us be competitive in the future. We have a great plan, but we don't have enough people to fill the jobs. All the way from a technical architect to the developer, we can't find people. And I was at a dinner party last night with a friend of mine who's a Pizza Hut executive, and he's like, "Our clocks are getting cleaned from Domino's." And I'm like, "What? Pizza Hut is way better than Domino's if you had the pizza." And he said, you know, "Domino's is nothing more. It's not a pizza company, it's a technology company that happens to love and do well at pizza." So, that's the first lens. The second lens is, I run a teen advisory board, and I can tell you that the teens who are good at, every summer I hire these teens, and the kids who've taken computer science are much more effective. And the third lens is as a mom. So, as, as Bam mentioned, both of my kids are, they're both are in high school, they both want to take computer science, but they're not able to, because they can't fit it in their schedule. And one of those kids is my daughter, and I would love for her, because I know she needs to win in the world that way. So, my, my ask is that you would consider all of the recommendations before you, but specifically the one around the computer science credit counting as a math credit, because I think it's so important for our kids, for our future. So, thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming and speaking with us today. Next, we have Dave Trabbert, and then Dennis Keir.
Thank you, and good morning. My name is Dave Trabbert. I'm CEO of Kansas Policy Institute. I wanted to share, and I think they're handing out copies now, of a Brookings Institute study. Brookings, for those of you who don't know, is a left-leaning think tank at the national level, and they did a study on government-funded pre-K school, in which they found that the evidence to support the premise that pre-K has cost-effective positive gains is, is actually pretty weak. To, to quote them, they said that there is no significant association with improvement in fourth grade NAEP scores, and they said under the most favorable scenario, increasing pre-K enrollment by 10% would raise adjusted NAEP scores by a little less than 1.5 years later, and no influence on unadjusted NAEP scores. This is not surprising to us. We, a few years ago, we looked at the kinder, the fourth grade rating scores comparing districts that had all-day kindergarten with those that did not. That was back when there was a push to do all, when the start for all-day kindergarten began. We found no significant difference in the fourth grade scores between the districts with full day and those with not. And perhaps one reason for, for adding these new things on the front end is that you're still running kids through a 1 through 12 system that still isn't working for many, many kids. The owns, your, our state assessment scores demonstrate that. If you look at the third grade ELA scores, 29% are below grade level and 41% on track. But generally speaking, those scores get worse as kids move throughout school. So, in the 10th grade, we find that it's up to 34% below grade level and down to 28% on track. This is consistent year after year, it's even a little bit worse in math. So, our, we're here to ask that you really, we think that kids are far better off by putting money where it's going to do the most good. The LPA audit found that school districts are not following state law in how they apply funding, and we would encourage you to ask to do that. They should follow the law, and, and put that money where it's going to work, so the kids in the system now are going to get the benefit, rather than hoping that adding something on would do better. And I'll be happy to stand for questions.
Clarification question? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the Commissioner laid out in his remarks today, how important it is to have brain development early, does your organization see an opportunity to do something outside traditional education, to bring communities together, to actually help the birth-to-five community with folks who aren't necessarily traditional educators?
I think if there is, that's a great question. This is not to say that there's no value in pre-K or kindergarten. The problem is, you're putting those kids into a system where there's many problems. And so, the, in, in, rather than having government get involved in, in funding those things, there, there may be benefits in offering tax credits to parents to do it on their own, to encourage more private development of, in, in the free market of, of those systems, and make it easier with, with some tax policy, but not to... not to get government involved in it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I have a question. You referred to a NAEP score.
Right.
A fourth grade NAEP score and students who were, what was the first part of that again?
We compared the fourth grade, uh, actually, no, the, the NAEP score was, um, this was from the Brookings study.
Right.
They said that there was no significant association with improvement in the fourth grade NAEP scores where their kids were in, uh, pre-K school.
Okay. Well, I wonder, because NAEP scores don't identify individual children, uh, it's an aggregate score, how would they know if those kids were in pre-K?
Uh, that's a question you'd have to direct to Brookings. That was their, uh, findings.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Dennis Keer. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Dennis Keer, and I'm the Director of the Kansas Masonic Literacy Center located at Emporia State University. The Literacy Center opened in 2017 with a 10-year, $4 million grant from the Kansas Masons. Our mission is to improve literacy performance of Kansans statewide, birth through adulthood. Our current focus is on services to families with children under five years of age. I want to highlight four of our efforts regarding this early literacy focus. First, we offer a free online course for childcare providers called The Growing Brain, which is approved by the Childcare Licensing Division of the Kansas Department of Health and Environment towards license renewal. You have a flyer on this, um, course. The course content is based on the latest brain research. Secondly, the Literacy Center was awarded a $25,000 grant from the Kansas Health Foundation and has matched that award with another $25,000 to address services to children under five in Barber and Lynn Counties. Our goals are to seek funding for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, encourage public libraries in those counties to sponsor a thousand books before kindergarten, establish an early literacy committee in the counties, and to develop an awareness campaign educating the general public of the importance of early literacy and the fastest rate of brain growth and development which occurs in the first four years of life. We have met the first three goals in each county in the first four months of the grant. Our goal is to repeat this effort over time in the remaining 26 counties lacking funding and the 26 counties with only partial funding for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Third, the Literacy Center will offer a play conference for childcare providers, June 6th, on the campus of Emporia State. Dr. Randy Watson is one of the keynote speakers. And the fourth effort is the Literacy Center also manages a mobilizing literacy, five-year, $2 million grant from the WS and EC Jones Trust for the 11 school districts in Coffey, Lyon, and Osage Counties to improve kindergarten readiness. Since fiscal year 17, the Literacy Center has funneled $1.7 million to these 11 districts. In fiscal year 21, we will distribute $354,000 in these 11 districts, all towards kindergarten readiness. I'll stand for questions.
I'd have to say you're getting a lot done.
Thank you. We're working hard.
Yeah, that, that's an impressive group of things, and so we really appreciate that, uh, that work with our, our young people. That's wonderful. Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Keer. Appreciate your, your time. State Board Citizen Open Forum is closed at 10:55. We'd like to thank our speakers for sharing their views with the Board. The State Board will determine if any of the issues should be addressed as an agenda item at a future meeting. Okay. At this time, we're going to move to, uh, our Kansas Model Standards on Handwriting. And let me see who's up today. Sarah?
Good morning.
Yeah, you're substituting today for...
Joanne McCrell.
Joanne McCrell. Looks like you have some additional folks here today, so if you'd please introduce them and welcome.
We do.
And this actually is an action item today, so, welcome.
Great. Good morning. Uh, my name is Sarah Perryman. I'm the redesign coordinator here at KSDE. Uh, before that, I was the ELA consultant. Um, in the year 2018, 2019, we began the process of reviewing those state handwriting standards. Uh, last summer, we gathered a committee of educators from across the state of Kansas to review and revise those standards. Uh, Joanne McCrell kind of took over for that committee last summer as I transitioned out of the ELA role and she transitioned in. Um, so today, we have two committee members here, uh, to speak with you, Josh Snyder and Nicole Coon. Uh, Josh Snyder is the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Wellsville Public Schools. He's been in that role for eight years. Uh, before that, he taught first through fourth grade for six years and was an administrator. Uh, Nicole Coon is the consulting teacher for a reading intervention for Topeka Public Schools. She's done that for the last six years and was a reading interventionist for five. Um, so, uh, Josh and Nicole will go over the standards and the adjustments that were made, uh, before you take your action. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Good morning. I'm really excited to be here as I, this is my first opportunity to present to the State Board of Education. I think the first thing that is really exciting about handwriting is there's so much more to it than just putting your hand on a pencil and to start writing across a piece of paper. As a previous elementary teacher, it would have been great for me to know what we know now, because we now know that handwriting is connected to literacy skills. Uh, when I received my reading specialist at the time, we really didn't understand a lot about orthographic mapping and the importance of it, but today, we have recognized the connection between producing letters and it directly supporting the understanding of reading. So it is a complete loop of literacy. So this opportunity to relook at our standards and move some things around, which I will discuss, has been really beneficial for me to go out and present to my teachers and hopefully to the state about how this can increase students' ability to read, so we're increasing the lifelike, um, longevity, um, and allowing them to become full citizens. So the first point I want to talk about is we did remove some language that supported individual programs, because we know that we're not here to endorse one program, but to endorse evidence-based practices. So there was that change. We did, um, also remove multiple meaning words. For instance, grip. Grip can refer to a mechanical device of how a student holds a utensil. So it's important to recognize, and I didn't know this, that it doesn't matter how the student necessarily grips the pencil, but the fact that they are able to do it with flow and ease, that's more important. So I remember when I was teaching first grade, I would be like, "Let's work on your pencil grip." Well, today, I now know that that's not the most important part. It's the fact that they can produce those letters with flow and ease across the paper. Uh, the other thing, we wanted to reinforce automaticity in production. We want to consider the students' mental and physical capabilities in developing manuscript and cursive writing. We know that you have to have really good muscle control, that fine motor development in K2, where at age seven, fine muscle control is fully developed. We also understand that we want to reduce the type of working cognitive brain load that you have to do to write. Students that have not fully learned the trajectory of their letters, it takes a lot of working memory to know, "How am I going to produce a letter B without the B being in front of me?" So we also know that's really important. We also know the form from a copy supports the kindergarten through third-grade students and the sequence of letter formation and manuscript for cursive. We, um, like I spoke earlier, we support orthographic mapping that reinforces reading, and it also connects pathways in students' brains for letter formation. I think it's really important that we understand illegibility is a big, uh, thing that we worked on within the standards. We want to talk about that functional grasp, and that grasp may look different for each student, as long as it supports the, oh, and the flow and ease, as well as solidify letter recognition, because those reversals for B and D and P and Q is something else that we kind of took a look at. Um, and then, again, to understand form from a copy versus produce from memory focuses on letter formation. So for memory, if I said, "Everyone take out a piece of paper this morning, you're going to write the letter F." If they can produce that from memory without forming it from a model, which would me then say, "Boys and girls, I've got a letter F here, and now everyone write a letter F." That takes two different types of working memory. And we want our students to move from being able to write from a model to doing it from memory. So that is my portion. I will let Nicole take the rest.
Good morning. This is also my first time coming, and on my way out, so many of my colleagues were like, "We want to come with you. See how it goes." So my portion is cursive, and the ever-so-famous question, "Why teach cursive?" Starting in third grade is when the students are first shown and taught how to write in cursive, and then in fourth grade is when they're really expected to start using cursive writing. And it's about 50 to 75% of the time, they should be writing in cursive, and they also need to understand why they're writing in cursive. I oftentimes think when I go to the bank, I have to sign my check, or if I get paid, I need to endorse the back of the check. So that's one of the times I need to use my cursive skills. Last week, I was in Atlanta, and I went to the Civil, Civil Rights Museum, and there were documents that Dr. Martin Luther King wrote on display. If I didn't have cursive skills, I would not have been able to read his documents. Um, very important historical documents are also written in cursive, Declaration of Independence. And then they continue writing in cursive until fifth grade, and then sixth grade is when, once they master it, then they can start writing in hybrid. And with hybrid, that's when they can choose, do they want to write in manuscript? Do they want to do cursive? Or do they want to do a combination of manuscript and cursive? And that usually, they can change their writing styles up until about ninth grade. With me personally, I know I was in college, um, and then even after I got married, my hybrid changed when I took on a new last name. So with hybrid, it's pretty much constantly changing. And then there is some research with cursive writing and dyslexia. Um, the International Dyslexia Association, um, did write an article talking about how the ease and flow for the dyslexic children might be easier, because with cursive writing, especially with the lowercase, the letters flow together with a loop or like a little smiley face at the end. And with manuscript, it's a lot of stop, start again. Um, there's just not a flow with the manuscript writing. And that's the end. If you have any questions.
Sarah, anything else you want to add before I open it up with questions?
No, I'll just say that the, uh, committee had some very robust, uh, discussions and, and pulled in a lot of research in making the decisions that they made. And, uh, as Nicole alluded, uh, that hybrid model is something that we, we were really intentional about incorporating to make sure that, uh, we're really equipping students with the tools to, so that they can have that automaticity, that flow and ease, um, so that they can be those lifelong literate, um, students that we know, uh, we want to have in Kansas.
Okay. So for you two newbies to present to the Board, you did a fine job, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, do you have any questions as far as the model handwriting standards are concerned? Ben?
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the Kansas Model Standards for Handwriting K6 as recommended by the Kansas Handwriting Model Standards Review Team.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Jim McNeese? Further discussion? Mr. Porter? Mr. Roberts? Thank you.
We look so much alike.
Yes, you do. I got confused. We got the two Jims, and now I'm confusing you two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we have a situation where we have a third-grade teacher who herself or himself does not have the skill set to impart, what do we do in that situation? I apologize if it's in your materials and it's already covered, but I just wanted to ask it publicly here.
When you mean not the skill set, I'd like to understand what you mean by that.
If a teacher doesn't know cursive...
Okay.
...herself or himself...
Yeah.
What, what do we do then?
Well, that's, that's an excellent question, and I, I would lead with, it's infelicitous to ever believe that any person that walks into a school is going to be fully skilled. That is what professional development is for. And what's really exciting about, um, this program and the way that you guys implement the model standards, pardon me, I'm going to knock a drink over all over you, um, we can go out and provide professional development. And once students and teachers understand the process of writing, then they're going to have maybe within themselves a little more, um, ability, or their own flow and ease, or their own, um, capacity to move that on and teach to their students. So to quit dancing around your question, I'll, I'll answer it directly as a previous third-grade teacher. Practice makes perfect, and what we practice at, we get good at. So if we're going to expect teachers to teach it, they need to plan it, they need to have support, and they need to have the professional development they need to be successful in our classrooms.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Uh, Mr. McNeese?
Thank you. And thank you. You guys did a great job. So whatever questions I ask or comments I make are not a reflection on that. Okay, first of all, um, yeah, you, you use it or you lose it? How are we using it as we go through the grades? Are, uh, is it just in a class, or is it broadly used, or are we encouraging broad use of, of the writing skills we're developing?
Well, um...
Other than we use it, "Oh, we're going to write now."
That's a really good question. And I think probably what you have to look at is that local control and what school districts are doing as far as what, what instructional time is being dedicated to handwriting, uh, the total minutes they're providing for reading instruction. Does that mean that we're giving explicit handwriting instruction, or does it mean that we are giving kids paper and having them just trace it? The thing about hybrid that I think is really important, if you all take a look at the notes that you've written today, you've either written in cursive, you've written in print, or you've written cursive and print. I think it depends on the scenario. So if I'm leading instruction in my classroom, is this a time that I'm going to focus on handwriting, or is this a time I'm going to focus on writing as a process? And I think teachers have to recognize those are two different things, and instructional leaders like myself have to help our teachers understand those are two different things. Am I assessing handwriting, or am I assessing students' ability to take information, synthesize it, and put it down on a piece of paper? So yes, there should be formal instruction. Yes, you should be seeing that, especially now that we know that it helps orthographically map letters. So primarily, you should really be seeing all sorts of letter writing formally in preschool, kindergarten, first and second grade. The nice thing about third grade is that's typically when you implement the cursive, so naturally, you're then going to see third, fourth, and fifth, where you should see handwriting. Formal handwriting instruction in sixth grade is where it becomes student choice. So that's what's, what helps the student. So really, to answer your question directly, preschool through fifth grade, we should see it pretty consistent, 15 minutes daily is evidence-based, 10 to 15. After that, it's really the student's discretion of how they're able to hear information and be able to produce their writing.
Well, in my conversations with friends who look like me...
Okay.
...by age, uh, the downfall of Western civilization is the result of a loss of cursive writing. But nobody uses it. I, you know, I say, "When nobody," it, it's now, they don't even like the hybrid. And we all do hybrid. I'm, I'm surprised when I first read about hybrid, how much hybrid, I, I've created my own cursive writing, you know? But, um, there are many forms of communication, and both oral and written, typed and processed. And we need to provide those kinds of communication tools for all of our students. And, uh, writing, uh, call it cursive writing or whatever, hybrid, is an important part of that, and we need to have it in our schools. You know, um, there's just so many different ways to communicate today.
Yeah, and it's our job to remove hurdles and break barriers for all students.
Sure.
So we should be personalizing any type of instruction in our classroom to meet students' needs. So if there are children who struggle and may need extra supports, or they learn in a way that they need to write it versus typing versus spoken audio for text-to-speech, it's our obligation as school districts and as professionals to ensure we're meeting all of our students' needs where they are, and we're providing a modified system within our classroom. But we also know the importance of that handwriting helps with reading, and your reading level is a straight correlation to your longevity of life. And so if you do not have a high reading level, um, most newspapers are eighth-grade reading levels. So if students aren't graduating with at least an eighth-grade reading level, they're going to struggle filing their taxes and reading the newspaper or the wanted ads or an online journal. So it's important that we start with a foundational... So it's important that we start with the foundational skills, which is the handwriting modality within literacy instruction in our classrooms.
Well, I would encourage our schools to use the handwriting standards to understand the multiple communication systems that we have and not to lose this.
Agreed.
You know, so thank you very much for your work.
Yep, thank you. And I would just add, you know, when I read these standards, I thought they were very clear and very well-written and were able to really take a look at how do you incorporate handwriting within reading and within writing. So I think you guys did a nice job. I would encourage everybody out there listening to get busy and look at these standards. They're quite well-done. Okay, let's have a motion, let's have a vote. Yeah. My thing's not working. Yeah, we've had a motion, we've had a second. Okay, all right, well, let's... We're going to take a vote. We have, I have had a motion and a second. All in favor of the handwriting standards, model handwriting standards? Please raise your hand. Well, it looks like a ten-zero to me.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. We appreciate you coming. Okay, we are going to have a report on the Visiting International Teaching Program serving in Kansas schools. And Regina, I believe, is... Here, here she comes. Okay, all right. Welcome. And it looks like you have some folks here to help today.
Yes, we have some teachers here.
Great, well, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Watson, and members of the board. Sarah and I are here today to give you an annual update on our Visiting International Teacher Program. And today, we have three teachers here to talk to you for just a couple of minutes about their teaching in their communities. We have Theli Marino, who is at Sabatha, Maria Valiente, who is at Jackson Heights near Holton, Kansas, and Maria Pilar Cisneros, who's at Seneca, Nima Central High School. I just wanted to tell a little funny story about Theli here because she's quite the joker herself. But when we were interviewing her, she was telling us that she's never traveled to another country in Europe, which to us, that's very surprising because all those countries are so close to each other. And she said, "No, first I go to Kansas and then maybe I'll go to those other countries." So I know that they are learning to like Kansas and creating connections with their students, their own country, Spain. And I'm going to talk a little bit about kind of the regulations and the boring government details about the program. Sarah's going to talk a little bit about the numbers this year and there'll be time for questions as well. So the Kansas State Department of Education is one of sixty-five approved designated sponsor programs for visiting international teachers that is overseen and managed by the U.S. Department of State. Approximately twenty-six of those sixty-five programs are with school districts or state boards of education or individual schools. And the others are individual agencies, not-for-profit agencies. It is important that everyone who is participating in the program, that is, school districts, the Department of Education, teachers, administration, that they understand that this program, the primary purpose of this program is to build mutual understanding and help create a foundation of trust between Americans and the rest of the world. The VIT program is not a solution to our teaching shortages. It is not a pipeline for hiring teachers. And these teachers can only stay for three years. Sometimes there's a possibility to extend the program for two years, but that's not an automatic process and we have to ask nicely to have that done. Most of our teachers who come to teach in Kansas only stay for one or two years. And that's because it's hard to leave your country, it's hard to leave your family. And a lot of them come for the international experience and to work on their English. As you know, all of these teachers that we place in schools in Kansas, in order to participate in this program, they have to be experienced and vetted. And they have to meet the following set of criteria. So they must be employed as a teacher in Spain the year before coming to the U.S. to teach. They must have at least two years of teaching experience. And this year, most of our teachers have an average of six years of teaching experience. They must hold a master's degree or higher in the content area or in pedagogy. They are vetted by the Spanish Ministry of Education. And they do not have to be a civil servant teacher in Spain, but many of them are. We also have an excellent working relationship with the Spanish Ministry of Education. And they have a liaison who works in Nebraska who helps facilitate the program in several states as well. And we find that support, and I know that the teachers as well find that support very helpful. Sarah and I and Phyllis Farrar before us have worked very hard to make sure that the Kansas State Department of Education runs a model program, that these teachers feel welcomed and supported when they arrive here in Kansas and throughout the school year. Each teacher is matched with a volunteer community mentor who helps the teacher find housing, integrates the teacher into their host community, and introduces them to people in the community as well. Sarah and I visit all of the teachers that first month and visit their classrooms and observe them. We give them feedback, support, sometimes hugs. That first month tends to be the hardest. And we also sometimes occasionally visit them throughout the year and we're on the phone with them as well. So this is a picture taken in July of this year, the first week when the teachers arrived. And it's a very busy week. As you can imagine, they arrive, they have professional development about teaching in Kansas. And at the same time, they're finalizing their housing arrangements, getting a car, a social security number. So it's a very hectic week, yes. But it's a lot of fun as well. And then Sarah's going to talk here.
So this picture was taken at our last stay Friday. We had a picnic in the park with all of the family members as well. As Regina said, these teachers come and they bring their families with them. So we had lots of kids this year, which was very fun and entertaining. It was, as Regina said, a very busy week. Not only are they learning about teaching in Kansas and doing their HR paperwork, but they're also getting cars and bank accounts and household items and cell phones. And so this end-of-the-week picnic is always kind of just a sigh of relief that they've made it, that they're feeling more settled, and they're ready for their next big adventure of teaching in Kansas. So this just kind of outlines how many teachers we have this year. So this year, we have twenty-five teachers. Seventeen of those are new. And then eight of those are teachers who are returning from last year. So we know that these teachers are accompanied by their spouses, by their children, and that they really become integrated into their communities across Kansas. Children are participating in sports. We had one injury this year, but he was able to get back out on the field, so he's good. They participate in extracurriculars. Their spouses work in the schools as either teachers themselves or paras. We have a husband in Lyons, Kansas, who's sponsoring and coaching a bilingual basketball team. Goodland this year needed a Spanish teacher for their high school. But they were also able to create a computer science position to bring her husband in as a teacher as well. So as you can see, a lot of our teachers work here in Topeka to support the dual-language program that's at the elementary, middle, and high school. But we also have teachers that are working out in our rural districts and providing that language instruction to our students across the state. So in the last few years, we've invited those Topeka teachers since they're relatively close. But this year, we wanted to bring in some of our teachers from those rural districts. So today, they're presenting to you and this becomes part of our report to the U.S. Department of State. And the teachers can also use this opportunity in their cultural activities report that they're required to submit every year. So each teacher will just speak to you for a few minutes about what they've learned, what they've been up to as they've been teaching here in Kansas. So we have three teachers. Theli Marino is in Sabatha. Maria Valiente is in Jackson Heights. And then Maria Pilar Cisneros, she was our brave volunteer that's going first and she is from Seneca. So I'll let her get started.
Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you, thank you. So I'm Maria Cisneros. I come from the northeast of Spain. I'm close to the border with France. And I'm teaching Spanish I and II in Nema Central High School, which is located in Seneca, Kansas. This is a small town I came to with my two children. My Sabina, who is a cheerleader, she's a seventh grader. And Pablo is a senior. They are both involved in many activities. And for the three of us, as you can imagine, it's like... It's very challenging, as they said. It's very difficult to settle down in a new country, in a new place, new language, new... We are teachers, but it's completely different, our teaching here and our teaching there. Here, you have, as you can see in the pictures, it's all about fun. And in our country, it's like much more boring, I would say. So we need to, we found it really difficult at first to teach. And this is something we were... How do we make it? How can we teach our language and avoid those phases of frustration? We didn't know at first how to deal with it. So I first went to Facebook. Facebook is an amazing source of information. So I went there. What kind of books do you use here? And they put me into contact with the idea of this more hands-on education that you use here for foreign languages, which is TPRS, comprehensible input, all these kind of modern ways of teaching languages. And there we went. I went to visit some teachers here and saw how they make it more fun. The class is more hands-on, less academic, less grammar, less... All those, all things that we teach in our country. And yeah, I went on. After visiting a couple of teachers here in Topeka, in Lawrence, in other places, I went on with some bibliography, some videos on YouTube. And yeah, here I am on my second year now, teaching in that way and having fun, really.
And can I just interject that it's a second language acquisition approach? It's not that it's not academic, but it's more of a natural acquisition approach. So I know what you mean.
Yeah, I don't know how to express this, but it's like very different, the approach we use. We start with grammar, grammar, grammar. And I tried this and I found it so hard and frustrating for me, for the children. And this year, everything is different. So it has been a matter of adjusting to the fantastic ways you have here. And I'm learning a lot. My children are learning a lot. And I think we are all getting lots of important things. Professionally, of course, professionally, of course, but also personally. So I can only thank Regina and Sarah for giving us this opportunity. So thank you.
Board members, I think we'll listen to all three and then I'm sure there'll be some questions.
Okay.
So thank you, Maria. And again, I think that just emphasizes how this program is really meant to benefit both parties, that the students have learned so much and so have our teachers. So next, we have Maria Valiente, and she's at Jackson Heights.
Hello, good morning, everyone. Thank you for this meeting. Thank you, Regina, and thank you for the invitation to talk about the International Teachers Program. My name is Maria and I am from northwest coast of Spain. So my community is Galicia. And Galicia is divided into four areas. So we have La Coruña, Lugo, Orense, y Pontevedra. So Galicia is on the top of Portugal. So what we have is our economy is... We have agriculture. We have also like cows, milk, cheese. We have also a big company that is called Zara and it makes many clothes and decorations. So many people work there. When did I apply for this program? I applied in 2018. And so this is my second year. And I am teaching in Jackson Heights. Jackson Heights is north, north Holton, like four miles north Holton. And it is a small school. And last year, I had preschool and elementary, also with middle school and high school. And this year, I only had middle and high school. So they are small groups of students. Why do I think that this is a good program? Well, I think that it's a good program because we are learning different cultures. So I am learning about Kansas, I am learning about your history, and I am learning about food here, like cinnamon rolls, for example. Or learning about football, yes, American football. That is, it was very difficult at first, but I understand a little. And for students, it's the same. I think that learning a new language is very good for them. It's very good for learning also the culture of different things in the world. And it opens up our mind. So for me also, I am learning new ways of teaching. We are doing also like technology. So we are doing that in class, project-based learning that is also different. And we learn also about bullying, for example. That is very useful for students. So I think it's a good experience. We are also going to do like a virtual exchange with country in Nicaragua so students can see different things. So I think it's a good program. Thank you for your attention.
Maria loves to cook and you see several pictures of her cooking with students and this is a really nice picture too.
Hello, good morning. My name is Theli Marino and I have come from Valladolid in the northwest inside of part of Spain. It is said that the best Spanish is spoken there. And students from all over the world come every year to study in our universities. I apologize for reading, but if not, I'm going to go around the bus, the bush. So I'm reading, if you don't mind. I had the dream of teaching our Spanish and culture abroad. To have that way, the opportunity to improve my English as well as to learn the customs and way of living of a different country. And this program offers this great opportunity. I am far from understanding everything I hear, but I can say that I do it today much better than I did six months ago. I'm teaching Spanish I, II, III, and IV at Sabatha High School. I am in my first year of the program and I have had very good experiences at the school and in town where everyone is so welcoming and so willing to help us. And they have helped me so much. We have done at the school virtual exchanges with students from Leon, a high, of a high school in Leon. You can see in that picture, that picture that we are having a virtual exchange with students. exchange with students who attend evening lessons, who is a very good thing, thing for our schedules. And we also learn, we had a day learning Spanish dances when my family came here to visit me for Halloween. And I have enjoyed very much the home, the homecoming week and the homecome, the homecoming parade was so funny. I, I was in the, in the float of the FFA students. So funny for me and for, I hope that for them also. And as Maria Cisneros, my friend, has explained, we have to adapt to a different way of teaching because of the different approach between the American education system and the Spanish system. And comprehensible input proves to be a very effective way to have kids engaged in their learning process, process, process. And I have been very lucky to find friends here like Maria, like both Marias and some other who have helped me to get familiar with this approach. So new for me. So I have to thank, to thank so much to Regina and Sarah and all of you for letting us leave this great experience. Thank you so much.
Well, thanks to all three of you for coming and speaking with us today. We really appreciate it. And for you representing the other groups that are in the program, the others, the other exchange teachers that are in the program. I'm sure the board members will have a few questions. My app on the computer does not seem to be working quite right. So if you have questions, if you'd raise your hands, that would, we'll go old school on that. So Ann Ma.
Yes, I think I asked this last year, so I'll be interested to see the, the feedback. What's the biggest difference between an American school and a school in Spain that you've noticed?
For me, the, the first thing that I was so different, it is the, is the, the journey. Because here you have a long and intensive journey. And at the beginning, it's so hard for us to get used to, to so long, to so, so long journeys of working.
And journeys by the, the workday, is I think is what you mean. Yeah.
Oh, really?
So what time does the workday start in, for school day start?
In Spain, we spend five hours at the high school. The rest of the work, we, we do it outside. But here we spend the, the eight hours apart from, from, apart, apart from working at home also. But for me, was the first thing that I find so difficult because you, at the beginning, you, you, you finished exhausted. And, but now when the new method, you, you feel more relaxed because you see that the kids are relaxing also and, and learning at the same time. And we are having much fun. And also, as Maria said, in Spain, we learn more, more grammar. And here it's more, more focused on communication. And at the end, that's the important thing, to be able to communicate. That's for me, I don't know.
I'll tell you what they said last year. They were elementary teachers and they said the biggest difference they saw is that here, when you tell the kids to get in line and line up, they do it. They couldn't believe. You can just tell kids to line up and they get in a line. They said in Spain, it was like herding cats, going down the hall, you know, to lunch and that kind of thing. So that was their biggest difference.
Any other questions? Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you find that, I don't know if the bigger high schools maybe where you're teaching, as far as the grading system, putting everything into a, the community, the technology piece of that to communicate with the parents and then you input the grades and then you're inputting them as assignments, do you find that that took a lot of time to adjust to it, to get to, especially a bigger school, maybe not the smaller schools. But I'm speaking like from a Blue Valley system where we have a Canvas system. It's very, it's very hard to, to learn that at first and the parents are learning it, the students have to learn it. And then a new teacher coming into that high school, it has to learn a system if they're coming from another school that doesn't maybe use that same system.
I, we also have, when I was at a school in Spain, we also have like a computer system for taking roles, taking role in class for if they have any, I don't know, if the student is not, he didn't bring the book, so we just have to put it on the computer. If he needs, you want to have a, say something to their parents, you can do that, make a note on the computer. So we had a system that do that also. But here, I think it's more, it's better. I like it because when you just put the grade, just automatically, they just do the, all the mathematics. I don't know if you understand. So it's just direct and you don't have to do the grade. You just put the number and just the, the computer do.
Calculate it.
Yes. Thank you. Calculated. So I think it's good that in, in my country, I, I usually use Excel with formulas to make the calculation. And then when I finish, I just put it. So I think it's, it's good. I, I didn't have any problem with the, with the system. I think it's very useful. And also you can send emails to their parents.
Right.
We use Bright Arrow, I think is the name. So I think it's good.
Thank you.
Ben Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've gotten to know one of these teachers as part of this program intimately because I go to church with, with them and the, the family in Lyons. And so I've gotten, in fact, I've even subbed in their classroom a couple of times, which is a lot of fun. And I don't know the districts that you're in intimately because they're not in my district. But I was curious, do you have a high, are those districts high ESL populations? I don't, I don't think so, but they're small. Whereas the one in Lyons has a large ESL population.
And I know that the principal was very excited that Gerard was, be able to speak English and Spanish to his basketball players. I think it gives him an encore advantage.
Yeah, it is. It is, it is very nice. And it's a very, it's a great family. And those kids have been a blast to have around in that family. But I, it was, it was interesting to me, and this is sharing just another piece of that, because Lyons has a high ESL population of Spanish speakers. But it's from the Central America region. And I remember her first day, she started speaking in Spanish and they had no idea what she was saying because it's a different Spanish. And so, and we teach Spanish, Spain Spanish in our classrooms here in the, here in the States, not necessarily the Central American Spanish. And it was, it was an interesting culture, meeting of different cultures in a school system. And that was really neat to see and be able to talk with her because it was, it was like, oh, you speak Spanish? Oh, no, not quite. It was different. And it was, it was neat to see.
Yeah. And actually, she speaks Catalan also and Spanish. Yeah.
Yeah, she's in Catalan region.
One of the photos that Maria had was her Spanish, Mexican Spanish and Castilian Spanish. So I know that she addresses those issues of difference.
I have a student from Mexico. So...
I have a student, well, I have a student from Italy also. She's a Chinese student. And I have a student from Mexico. So sometimes when I am speaking, I ask or he asks me, oh, you say like that? Or so we are having like different expressions sometimes. So we make like a column with words that you say in Spain and with another column with words that you say in Mexico or probably Argentina or any place. They have different words or vocabulary. So it's interesting.
Yeah, it, it was, it is, it's very interesting. And that was enlightening to me because it was just enlightening just from that. And, and I do have an exception, Dr. Bazat, as to what you said, learning how to love Kansas, it shouldn't take that long to love Kansas. It should be overnight. So anyway, I thank you for doing what, working with our kids and thank you for what you do. It's, it's welcome to the great state of Kansas and, and it's a pleasure to have you. And it's been fun to get to know a member of your cohort quite intimately, living in one of my communities.
Well, thank you very much for coming and taking a day out of your day with your students. We appreciate you doing that. It certainly has been a valuable program and we appreciate, and appreciate your experience in the United States with, with our students. And it sounds like you're learning a lot, too, which is a great thing. So we really appreciate that. Thank you very much. And Regina and Sarah, thank you. Okay, board members, we do have another agenda item, which is to begin the discussion on computer science standards. And we're approaching noon, but we do have to get at least this introduced. I don't know if some of you need a quick break or if you want to just go ahead. Okay, I think, I think maybe we need a very quick break. And then as soon as we can all get back, we'll get started, Stephen. So we'll give you a minute there to get set up.
Thank you.
Thirty minutes, I believe, scheduled to discuss this morning. And then we'll come back again tomorrow after we've had our discussion on the qualified admissions and the changes that that qualified admissions piece will, potentially will be. We've got a lot of discussion time there to provide an opportunity. So then actually, we'll come back after that to have further discussion and probably a vote at that point in time. So today, we're going to spend about thirty minutes, excuse me, looking at this. Just so you know, a description of the recommendations is on page fifty-seven in your agenda. There are also two letters of support in your folder from the KC Tech Council and Code.org. So you have that additional information in there. Okay, Stephen, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, thank you very much for having me back to talk about computer science. I wanted to lead off, if I could, with a reference to the conversation you just had. Last summer, Regina and Sarah actually had me to Lawrence to speak to Yosef, who is the visiting international teacher heading to Goodland to speak, to teach computer science. So I was able to present him a copy of the, of the new standards and talk about teaching computer science and standard in, in Kansas. He actually speaks Catalan as his primary language. But we both spoke computer science. And so it was good to speak the same language. So I'm glad to be here to discuss and of course clarify. Now, I, just like we, we started a lot of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, I tend to start my talks with the definition, a reminder of what a successful high school graduate looks like. Obviously, academic preparation is a big part of computer science. It is a, a well-known discipline, academic discipline of its own. We've, we've talked about the cognitive preparation that is present in computational thinking. And of course, technical skills pretty much defines computer science and, and what we do. We, we've heard several people today talk about the employability skills, the employment needs of computer science. And so I, I feel comfortable going forward, talking about the importance of computer science within this definition of what a successful high school graduate looks like. This is a timeline that we, we did. We had the standards adopted almost a year ago. Charged the task force in April 2019. We've met, we've gone across the state, had listening tours across the state, had four different subcommittees, curriculum ecosystem, a policy subcommittee. I tried not to call it policy at first, but that's basically what it ended up being, and teacher prep. So the first recommendation, create a dedicated statewide computer science education position, which kind of drives most of the rest of the discussion. I'm, I'm actually glad to say this, this is a little bit outdated. The, the position is now filled as of yesterday. I, I accepted the job and moved my desk to the sixth floor. So that's me. Thank you. Thank you. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm looking forward to actually wearing one hat and, and being able to focus on driving computer science education through the state of Kansas. It's, it's a great challenge. It's, it's exciting. Recommendation number two, you know, there are different approaches in different states. Some states like Arkansas mandate that every school teaches a computer science. In, in honoring the principle of local control, that is such a strong part of, of education in Kansas, we recommend that we encourage all schools to offer computer science. Currently, we are teaching computer science through CTE pathways, CTE programs in, in about half of our districts. And we, we talked last month about how that actually covers a significant, more than half of the Kansas population. But, but we, we can do more. And, and part of my mission as, as the computer science education consultant is to help more districts offer computer science. So another recommendation, and, and Kansas is one of only two schools I found this, or two states I found this morning, that doesn't allow computer science to satisfy a core graduation requirement. Forty-eight states currently do in one form or another. Last meeting, we, we got into the weeds a little bit about what that looks like, what that actually means. I think the committee was actually looking at computer science as the broader topic. So a, for example, an AP course, New Mexico is one of the examples I give, where they allow computer science to count as a math or science credit. They specify four course codes. And those four course codes map to the two AP computer science broad general courses. Arkansas has a little bit, they allow like mobile application development to count. Robotics counts in Arkansas. I, I don't think there's any desire on the committee to get to, to that level. You know, we were thinking the broader computer science course, not necessarily at the AP rigor level, but, but a broad course in computer science would, is what, what they were recommending. Licenseur endorsement. I've actually had several conversations and continue to have conversations with Michelle and Susan, who are, who are here today. They're the experts, far more expert than I am on licensure. There is an existing Praxis exam. It's a, it's one of the three-hour exams. So that is, is an open pathway to it. The, the concern, of course, as we were going back and forth on the licensure, on, on the endorsement, is, is on the one hand, an endorsement signifies competence and competence in, in the subject area. On, on the other side, it's a limitation. And, and what we don't want to do is to create a requirement that all of a sudden people can't teach computer science when they have been doing it. The, the grandfather option, I, I'm, I'm not sure is an option within our, our current system. People who have been teaching the computer science course, but like I said, the Praxis is, is an option. What other states have done, for example, Arkansas has gone through a process and, and they are fully implementing an endorsement right now. But, but they've ramped up to it. They, they built up to it over, over a few years' time. And so that, in, in order to keep from being a limitation, a, a, a major limitation would, would probably be a good approach. And recommendation number five, funding. Again, this is, is, has some opportunity for public-private partnership kind of opportunities. I've already had conversations with people through the state. And so a million a year is, is based upon some, some, some modeling by, by agencies like Code.org. You know, my position actually has some PD budget attached to it that I'll be able to spend pretty quickly on, pretty early on getting some of this going. So it's not a million dollars, but it's some. So with that being said, those are the five recommendations. Do I have, Madam Chair?
I'm sure there are questions. My hand-waving app is working now. So if you guys want to use that, you can, you can buzz in. I would be very interested to continue to hear about, I think, the computer science as a graduation core requirement. I think that be, it'll be an interesting discussion after we have our conversation tomorrow about the, the, where we go after the requirements as far as from KBO are concerned. But I think we need to take a look at that. One thing I hope that we do, and I think we will, but I just want to say this, you know, we, we, it's a specific recommendation that counts as a core graduation requirement. But I want to make sure that we're really looking at how do we embed computer science in, into all levels, starting at elementary up through middle. I mean, I know a lot of middle schools have computer-type classes. And I want us to really take a look at that. And I think that may impact the licensure issue because some of our middle school folks, there might be different licensure needs and teaching needs at middle level. folks, there might be different licensure needs and teaching needs at middle level than there would be at the high school. So, I want us to kind of make sure we're taking a look at some of those things. So, those are some of my issues that I want us, and I don't know that they, they're not certainly anything that's going to prohibit me from voting for these recommendations. But I think as we continue to look at the implementation, those are things that we need to continue to look at as far as how we do that. So, we've got a couple of questions, questions to start with Ben Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank you and Michelle. I've had a lot of concerns about the licensure piece, and you've addressed it in your, and some of it in your presentation, but in talking with my superintendents about this issue, their concern is like, well, if we want to expand our computer science, how can we if we have to all of a sudden have the, with the licensure piece? And you talked about the limitation. Said, yeah, they want to do it. They're, they see the need for it. They see the importance of it. But they also don't have the money to hire a teacher for that, for the few classes that they would be required, because it wouldn't be a full-time position at a lot of my districts. And also, just figuring a good way to make sure I'm clear in this statement, but the flexibility that the districts need to operate and provide what's best of it is, because all my superintendents want West Bets for their kids. And they're not going to put in a teacher that is totally incompetent in this field. And they want to do what's best. And I had a conversation, an email conversation last night from one of my constituents, who she's, she works for a telecommunications company, which I know it's not, it wasn't listed on the tech website from our visitor, or from our commenter this morning, but, and she said, we need these people in our workforce, whether it's TCT or MCT, and these local telecommunications companies that provide a vital service to our communities, because they provide the internet to a lot of these rural communities, because the big corporations don't always like to do so. And it's been very frustrating in areas of my district on that front. And so, I, I know we're starting that conversation. I don't know what the solution is off the top of my head, but I appreciate, I want to extend publicly my appreciation for Michelle and yourself and addressing some of the concerns that I have and making sure that we give our districts, especially in these first few years, a lot of, a lot of support and a lot of leeway to see how we can implement it and integrate it in the current system. Because I know a lot of the standards are elementary-based, as I recall from last April. There wasn't a whole lot of secondary standards, because we're using the CTE pathways. Am I correct in that assessment?
You are, sir. It's a little more complicated than that. We have the two levels of standards at the high school.
Yeah.
And L1 is more of the, the general knowledge, whereas L2 is the CTE pathway.
Yeah, but I, most of that was elementary. Of the standards document, it was most of it was elementary. And so, see how we can support our elementary education students as they go through as well, since, as well. So, I appreciate it. It's still a concern that I have and will continue to have, and it's kind of a broader picture, but making sure our districts have access to it. And that's, if we're talking about equity, that is very important to me, that our rural districts have equitable access to offering computer sciences, as well as the larger districts that can employ a full-time computer science teacher. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ann Mahle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Steve, again, appreciate this much. It's so hit and miss. Like I noticed at our middle school, they're doing robotics, and the kids are all excited. You get to high school, nothing. So, encouraging every school to have something, at least within the district. I mean, you know, you can get something started in grade school, make sure they can carry on. But I'm looking again over the standards. I mean, it seems to me like the courses, the curriculum is like all over the board. I mean, computer science in some schools means we're doing robots, somewhere else we're doing coding, somewhere else we're doing something else. So, how do you even license that when we don't even know what the courses look like?
I'm not sure there's a solid answer for that that I have right now. Yeah. We don't know. It's complicated, because you're exactly right. The curriculum is all over the place. There is a fairly standard definition of what AP computer science looks like, and that's driven by the College Board. The College Board actually has their framework that they've developed those two courses behind.
And every kid needs AP computer science.
That's, that's correct. It's, I, we need to do more work in that, is the short answer. I'm sorry.
So, is this something one of these teams would work on, or would that be the licensure team? We don't really have a curriculum team, do we?
We do have a curriculum part of the website that we're working on, a curriculum updated. But in terms of licensure, I do plan on spending a lot of time on the first floor, talking to our experts.
What do you think if, does your team, would they support that if you could pass that praxis test, you could teach computer science in high school?
Yes, I think so. I, I wouldn't, the AP, the praxis exam is the overarching computer science. In fact, that's what Wichita State University is using for their teacher prep design.
Okay.
They're actually, they're using the framework behind the praxis exam. It is a broad certification exam, but I would be comfortable saying that that person could teach K through twelve of computer science.
Okay. Well, just one other question. Would this be something, like Ben said, there can be a lot of small schools want to do something, they don't need a full-time teacher? Is this, could this fall under one of those categories where you wouldn't actually have to have a license, but you could come in and teach one hour a day because you're BAM and you can, you know, come on in and teach? Would this fall in that category?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. The experts are saying yes.
Thank you.
Other questions at this point? I know, like I've said, we'll be back with this tomorrow. I have a feeling even after we vote, I'm kind of guessing, the board may want some kind of regular updates on this, because it's, I think we're all pretty interested in how we go forward with this.
To quote the commissioner on this, the real work, the real work is now starting.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Any other questions at this point, Board members? Okay, well, we will revisit this tomorrow after our qualified admissions conversation, and that's when it is scheduled to be an action item. So, Stephen, thank you. Thanks to all of our guests, who were also here today to support this. So, we appreciate it. And we will recess for lunch after we're back from lunch. Any of you that want to stay, we have, it's always exciting to have the Kansas Teacher of the Year team here, and they will be here today to share some things with us. So, thank you. To bring the afternoon session of the February State Board of Education meeting back to order, we are, like, this might be our favorite time, meeting of the whole year at this time. It's always exciting to have the Kansas Teacher of the Year team here to present to us. I'm sure you guys have already been out and about and talking to groups, but we're really excited and honored to have the opportunity to hear from you today. So, we really look forward to that. And I, also to have Dale introduce the team, so Dale.
I'll tell you what, Board members, this is really, I really, I think this is probably the best hour you're going to spend through the year, the best hour of all. These are a super bunch of people, and they did very well in the House Education Committee combined. It worked out real well, did a super job. They were loved on the House floor. Everybody wanted to take their pictures, didn't they?
Yes, sir.
And so, anyway, it's a super bunch of caring people. They got some great stories. They're going to introduce themselves, one by one, and then we get all done, whatever time is left over, and there will be some. Why, it'll be time for questions and, but, super, and they know, they got it all ironed out, who's going to go first, right?
Yes, sir.
Let's do it. Thank you.
I go first, so I don't have to follow anybody.
I may refer to this, Sean, and he's harem.
Sean didn't do that. Sean, Sean does. And if Sean didn't, they would set me straight on that. But Sean does. Good afternoon, I'm Sean Hornung, and I'm part of our high school learning community at Wemigo. As a social studies teacher, I've always loved the stories. History and her story is about our collective story. I love the following quote by educator Leon Mackenzie about shared stories and how we are all part of something bigger than ourselves. When we are born, we arrive, as it were, in the middle of the conversation, to which we feel compelled to contribute as long as we are able. Our students have all been born in the middle of a conversation, a story in which someday they will be the main authors. Our responsibility as adults is to give our youth a story they'll be proud to be a part of, and one in which they'll write an even better chapter than the ones that preceded theirs. As teachers, our charge is to hand our students the pen, to provide our students the skills to become authors of a brighter future for themselves and our communities. Education must remain public for every student to live rich, full lives, and to write a wonderful story. Each story should have a supportive setting. Education is the lifeblood of community. Every neighborhood elementary school bearing the name of a local hero or historic figure loves and fosters future leaders. Every high school lying in the center of their town, to those schools holding down their respective portions, East High, South High, Northwest High, of our bigger cities. Vibrant public schools have always been at the very heart of community and must continue to be in the middle of the conversation for the story to hold the promise of a happy ending. When your home and your respective districts visit schools, explore the inherent challenges and particular genius of each learning community. Engage with young people, ask them about their lives, help ensure that each student has a seat at the table. Connect with educators who work tirelessly to help our children recognize their gifts, develop their talents, and connect their creativity, and to love those, and love who they are and who they will become. As educators, we understand how special it is to be a part of our students' stories, and we know their stories become a part of who we are and why we aspire to more. Because of our work, our children will find greater voice for their stories. Thank you.
My name is Julie Levinstein, and I'm a fourth-grade teacher in the Baser-Linwood School District. For just a minute, I would like you to join me as I walk you through an ordinary day in my school. I open a classroom door to check on one of our newest teachers, and I see tears in her eyes. A student she had invested significant time with was moving, and she knew that they would both miss the relationship that they had created. Further down the hall, I noticed a veteran teacher with her students lying on the floor around her, eyes closed, as they were being led through a mindfulness lesson and learning to take care of their mental and their physical health. In the counselor's room, a student and the counselor were sitting next to each other on the floor with Google, our therapy dog. As the student was petting the dog and quietly talking, it was obvious this was a deeply needed moment and conversation for this child. In the resource room, I observed a paraprofessional surrounded by a small group of students working diligently on reading fluency. After each reading passage, they gave one another a high five, because they had been taught this to encourage others. And finally, I picked up my own students from their PE class. As we were walking back to our classroom, one of my students had a big grin on his face. He proceeded to tell me that he had practiced the self-regulation techniques we talked about in class, and he was finally able to complete the entire game they played without any outburst. Our students and our teacher's success is often measured by test scores. However, what I, most of what I just described is not related to a teaching standard upon which we test. Rest assured, lifelong learning was occurring. Our students were learning that someone cared enough to listen, to notice them, and to give them a place where they felt loved, valued, and safe. Learning occurs when teachers have first created this relationship with their students. Many of our education discussions center around testing and data. Let's continue to redefine student success. In this ordinary day in my school, teachers, counselors, and paraprofessionals worked as a team for a win for our students. I can still hear the words of my own kindergarten teacher, "Many hands make light work." This phrase should resonate in each of our minds as we work together for Kansas students. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Multenney. I teach second grade in Shawnee Mission. It's a huge honor to be here, speaking with my talented team of educators and dedicated board members. I love this career, because I get to build relationships with students. I get to design creative lessons and continuously learn new research and innovative theories from our field. I'm passionate about continuing my education and learning new ideas to incorporate in the classroom. Forty years ago, when I was a student in elementary school, kids sat in quiet rows and waited patiently with hands raised. This compliant classroom didn't necessarily mean students were learning. As I reflect back, I'm not sure I was truly actively engaged. Fast forward to twenty-five years ago, when I was student teaching, we gave every student the same assignment, identical worksheets, and we expected everyone to learn in the same way. This outdated model of education is not engaging or effective. Students today are not the same learners we had in years past. Emerging brain research has informed us in many relevant ways, allowing us to improve our curriculum and instruction. Our profession continues to evolve and change, and we need to adapt and create personalized, innovative lessons and meet our students' diverse needs. Today, learners are actively collaborating on projects, moving around our classroom spaces, and using technology to enhance research and develop critical presentation skills. Kids are coding and using robotics to explore the future math and science professions. As teachers, we must continue learning, embrace change, and be flexible to better support our students. As I noticed more kids in my classroom suffering from stress and anxiety, I began to research ideas to better support them. I discovered by incorporating mindfulness strategies, I could increase their social, emotional learning and reduce their stress levels. After observing kids that have difficulty focusing, I carved out time for intentional brain breaks during the day. This allows them to move and stretch. Research has demonstrated that physical activity benefits all students. Once these activities became part of my routine, I could immediately measure a reduction in disruptive behaviors. Additional movement opportunities provided by flexible seating also contributes to better mood and concentration, essential for academic success. Likewise, when the latest research revealed that kids with dyslexia need more of a structured literacy model, we shifted our reading programs and incorporated more systematic phonics instruction. Teachers in my district went to trainees and spent their summer breaks developing new procedures to better support learners. Our classrooms of today are welcoming, vibrant, sometimes noisy, collaborative spaces. As professionals, we're constantly looking for research that supports best practice. While our field is truly an art, we cannot forget the science behind what is best for kids. We appreciate your support of teachers, and we believe that Kansans can. Thank you.
I am Stephanie Lane, a fourth-grade teacher in Clay Center. I'm honored to be here in a room with incredible educators and board members who all want to achieve a culture in Kansas that is successful in leading the world. However, I'd like to take a moment to tell you a story about a student who grew up in Kansas during a time where measurable success was not equal across all areas. This student battled anxiety. The learning environment was not a safe place for them to share their worries or their fears. The counselors, if present, were not trained to provide coping mechanisms to allow for this student to authentically grow. The dialogue within the building was not one that focused on social, emotional learning or trauma. Public speaking, changes in the day, or variations to the schedule were all elements that made this student very uneasy. Teachers and staff lacked resources to better encourage and provide aid. This student- This student spent the better part of 18 years struggling to hide the nervousness that consumed the school day routine. Despite all of this, this student grew up to be a teacher in the state of Kansas, a state that has begun heavily focusing on trauma-informed care, social-emotional learning, and the inclusion of more counselors, school psychologists, and resources to better the learning culture for all of our learners. I fully support our state's push for social-emotional integration within our school culture as a Kansas teacher. But, being the student from my story who struggled for years within our classrooms, I want to ask for support and need for more. For more awareness, more acceptance, more trained professional personnel to support our students and our teachers. Our Kansas students deserve more. We have many who are suffering daily and they should have access to places and people who make them feel safe, secure, and understood. If Kansas is to truly lead the world in the success of each student, then Kansas schools need a more student-focused system that delivers support and resources for individual success in all areas, including social-emotional learning. And it must begin here, with all of us, together. Those with the ability to advocate for our kiddos, because together, Kansans can. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Laura McDonald. I teach 7th grade at Washburn Rural Middle School. Washburn, I accidentally put a R in there. And I want to thank you for listening to our journey with our students and our passions. Thank you very much. Seven years ago, one of my 7th graders and I started a club because of a unit I teach that inspired him to take action. We called the club the Make a Difference Club, or the MAD Club, for short, because he wanted this to be the focus, making a difference. MAD Club meetings are held during advisory, a time in our school when school is in session, so that all students can be a part of the group and participate without the need for transportation and get rides after school. This club requires that all initiatives be student-led, created, and completed. During the first meeting, the students decided that they wanted to work on empowerment and support for all students. Several of their friends, and even some of my MAD Club members, participate in self-harm, have attempted suicide, or struggled with suicidal ideation. As word of the club got out, our second meeting doubled in size. Over the years, the MAD Club has completely changed the culture of our school. We now have at least 60 students at meetings, and the members include football players, cheerleaders, students who feel they do not fit anywhere, and some students who some of our building might consider to be the troublemakers. The students put supports into place that they identified as being critical to combating the teen suicide epidemic that is affecting themselves and their peers. In our district alone, we suffered the suicide of five students two, two or three years ago. One was a high school student, honors classes, great test scorers, great, you know, we'd never saw it coming. Another was a 5th grade child. 5th grade. In response to losing their friends, five of my MAD Club leaders partnered with two local firefighters to create a suicide prevention and a crisis card that includes multiple phone and text lines that students can use when they're hurting. They are in every single classroom and office in our building. Each of the 1,000 students in our building participate in the presentation every single year. Since we implemented these crisis cards and the presentation two years ago, the number of suicide attempts and students who attempt self-harm in our building has dropped by 50%. We've been invited this year to partner with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention to provide future supports for our students. The mental health crisis in our schools requires these types of supports for our students so that then they can excel academically. Regardless of our income, our geographical location, and even our educational achievements, trauma and mental health issues, including suicidal ideation, are very real struggles impacting our students today. What these MAD Club students are doing and accomplishing cannot be measured through an assessment score. Fostering these young adults to be compassionate, resilient, they advocate for one another, and they see beyond their own needs will pay dividends to our beautiful state for years to come. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Cara Ballou and I'm a high school teacher of students and I teach social studies in Andover. One of the things that a teacher did for me was that I thought I was going to be a D1 basketball player. And she helped me realize that leadership was a much better idea for me. And, boy, am I grateful. So, one of the things about teaching that I firmly believe is that teaching is leading. And, yes, I'm on my toes. As my colleagues are very kind to point out. So, leadership is an activity for me. It's not something you do from the sidelines. It is not a position that you are elected to, it is not a position that you are hired to do. It's not a position of age. It is a choice to engage others, to empower progress. The best teachers don't manage classrooms, they lead them. They balance an art with skill and teachers lead students to achieve dreams, to love content, and to believe in themselves. This endeavor is the heart of a profession that strives to ensure that young people reach their potential. It is this mission right here that drives the men and women who sit here and the men and women who sit where you sit today. Because today, across Kansas, we have teachers leading in classrooms. Teachers who lead give voice to students, and today's phones offer resources that a lifetime of learning would not have yielded when our state was founded. Teachers are no longer the sage on the stage. Our competitive advantage in the classroom now is leadership. Once the domain of those with money, education, family name, or land ownership, today, anyone can lead, anytime, anywhere. And the greatest teachers embrace this idea. They seek progress, not elusive solutions, knowing that the journey teaches more than that final destination. Leadership is the art of teaching by empowering people to believe that they are capable of things beyond what they can see. Great teachers have vision. And Kansas kids succeed when we offer them space to explore, space to lead. And we ask them for their ideas, we ask them what they think, and most importantly, we stop and we listen. When you visit our classrooms, because I know that you do, I am sure that you are amazed by what you hear and see from the talented professionals that are in those classrooms. Our Kansas students are fearless. They do not know what they do not know, and that makes them powerful, powerful, powerful partners in their education. As educators, as board members, as Kansans, we have a duty to offer youth a voice and a chance to lead in our classrooms, our schools, and communities. I want to thank you for being part of that leadership with the Kansas Redesign Initiative. It provides space for youth. It provides space for leadership that has not been given an opportunity to do the work at all times in our history. It creates opportunities for teachers and schools and youth to risk, to fail, to succeed, to learn, and to lead. And I think it's one of the most powerful initiatives for educational change in our nation today. I want to thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Amy Hillman. How are you? I'm telling you, this is, this is awesome. Miss Sherry, I promise, I'm gonna do a good job, I promise. Y'all, my name is Amy Hillman. I'm a middle school teacher from Olathe, Kansas, USD 233. We at Santa Fe Trail, well, we are part of the Mercury 7 Redesign Initiative. What does it take to be a Kansas educator? You must be courageous to think differently because today's learners are different. We have the courage to disrupt the norm with high expectations and providing collaborated support to empower students with opportunities and experiences that will make them believers in education, believers in their journey. We must have the courage to champion our students, to be inspired by their diversity and their uniqueness. Thirteen years ago, two of my English language learner students, who I will call for today, my engineer and my marine. My marine, who herself had a dream of becoming a teacher. Well, they asked to start a Saturday morning peer-to-peer mentoring group to work on mathematics skills with other ELL students who were struggling due to the language barrier and a feeling of disengagement. We would refer to these students as at-risk or highly impacted in today's world. They could learn from one another in an environment where they felt safe and free of judgment. Y'all, I was all in. These leaders were wise beyond their years, knowing that time was precious and that their peers' tickets to success wouldn't be won through Saturday morning cartoons but would require more for their learning. This program continues today with 55 volunteer mentors, we call them teacher leaders, from our Olathe High Schools, local colleges, many of whom themselves were Saturday Scholar 6th graders. This year, we are connecting with more than, get this, 70 6th and 7th graders that are at-risk, highly-impacted students. Through the years, what we've watched students become confident collaborators, STEAM leaders, and civically engaged, coaching them how to give back, and yes, we have witnessed our academics improve each and every year, each of the 13. Now, we realize one of the greatest impacts of our program is that we are pre-training our next generation of teachers. You know, makers of the teachable moments? And they are beautifully diverse. I call them my gorgeous spice rack of culture and experiences. Oh, yes, I went there. And y'all, they are a gift to Kansas learners. And my engineer, mhm, graduated at the top of his class from KU, you betcha, and he's currently employed at QWIT. And by the way, he never misses a Saturday. And as for my marine, ooh, this young lady, she had dreams of becoming an educator, you remember? And after serving our country, she is now in her second year of educational classes. And yes, she will become one of our greatest. They both are the definition of courage. Now, I challenge each of us in this space to have the courage to disrupt the norm, to continue to support our redesign mission. We need the best and the brightest. We need teachers that look like our learners. We need the best Kansas has to offer. Our students are worth it. Kansas, we can. Now, let's get to work.
I used to hate following Amy when I was speaking, but now I love it because I feel like she gets you really warmed up for me. Which is great, my work is so much easier. I just, I want to take a minute to thank you for our invitation to be here today and for your continued support of the Kansas Teacher of the Year Program and the Kansans Can Redesign through these opportunities. And I can tell you, now working on the national level, national level, that Kansas is really a premier program. Things that are going on in our state are incredible and they're worth talking about, and I am so lucky to be a part of this program. You know, I have many passions, but through these connections that I've made with all of you who used to just be pictures on a piece of paper that I saw, now you're like my Facebook friends, we're family. And these people here, I have seen there are so many things that I can care about, not just in the early childhood realm, but that is where my story is, so that's what I'm going to talk about today. My name is Tabitha Rossbroy and I am from Winfield. I have been teaching preschool for 10 years, and there in Winfield, I teach a program that is nestled, nestled inside of a retirement community, inside of a nursing home. So, it's really unique, I invite any of you to come and visit someday. Hopefully, when I'm in the classroom, Dr. Watson will be there when I'm not, but soon, I will be back in there. It's been a long time since early childhood education, specifically preschool, 0 to 5 years old, has had a seat at this table in this arena. And so, I'm so excited to be representing that and bringing a voice to early education. In my career, I've witnessed incredible moments of challenges, of love, and growth. Like you've heard from my teammates here today, though, our kids are in crisis. They're coming to us with more needs than ever before. They are in desperate need of connection that wires our brains for academic success and problem-solving and self-regulation. Our teachers are rapidly leaving the profession because sometimes managing children's behavior is overwhelming. And that, you know, I'm active in KNEA in Winfield, and the thing that I hear from teachers most when they leave is they don't have enough support on knowing how to help children manage their emotions. It's overwhelming. It sometimes does feel like we're jumping from crisis to crisis. Teenagers are engaging in elevated acts of self-harm, and again, that's another crisis that we feel like all we can do is intervene in. But my friend Annie McKay once said, "Investing in early childhood education helps us accomplish much more than just crisis management." And I'm going to tell you a story about how we've done that in Winfield. In my classroom, I serve the special education needs of my students through their individualized education plans. Preschool is typically the time when a child's developmental needs are diagnosed for the first time, and these IEPs often carry over into kindergarten. In the last two years of offering free, full-day preschool in our community, I have dismissed four students from special education by the end of the year. In my decade of teaching, I had never dismissed students from an IEP before. I was always the person putting them on an IEP. But through a full-day program, rich with opportunities to experience academic and social challenges in a safe place, I have been able to dismiss these students from special education. Consistent, quality, early childhood programming can reduce the need for special education and other services later on in life. By identifying needs earlier, we are able to reach students when their brains are developing most rapidly, before they are 5 years old. Imagine a world where we equip children with what they need before it's too late. Through the Kansans Can Redesign, kindergarten readiness is one of the five outcomes, and many Kansans cite lack of early childhood experiences as a major hurdle to their family's success. When we look at needs in our state, it's important to note that quality early childhood programming can help address all of the outcomes that our state hopes to improve. I thank you for your commitment to education in our state, and moving forward, I hope to work with you to make quality early childhood programming a part of every child's story. Thank you. I have one more, I have one more thing, Mr. Dennis.
I was gonna ask the first question.
Okay, well.
Go right ahead.
All right, I got one more thing. I like two, I like two rounds of applause. So, I try to space it out.
It's working, it's working.
Okay, sorry. Yeah. So, you've just heard from 150 years of collective teaching experience on this team. I think it's very telling that none of us focused solely on academic content in our remarks to you today. Each of us are trained in how to prepare students academically, but the changing needs of today's students require us to respond differently because academics alone are not enough to secure the future of our children. Self-regulation and social-emotional health are the missing pieces in academic success. When we don't address the emotional needs of children, academic mastery does suffer. As you continue to represent the educational needs of our state, we ask that you picture us where we are at the threshold of our schools every morning, arms open, ready to accept whatever child and whatever need comes through that door. We ask that you do everything you can to continue to fortify our education system with the tools and the support that we need to respond on the front line of our students' lives. Thank you for inviting us here today, and thank you for the opportunity to share our firsthand experience meeting these needs where they demand to be met in our classrooms. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a simple question.
Okay.
There's four National Finalists of the Year for, for the United States Teacher of the Year. Can you name one?
Tabitha Rossbroy! Thank you. That was a softball.
It's kind of interesting, though. It's kind of interesting, though. Nobody's over 35 that's got 150 years of experience.
Exactly. We look good.
Yeah. Okay, questions, Madam Chair?
I have no doubt that we're going to have a lot of questions for you guys. First of all, thank you for your comments. You know, as you talk about, and as Tabitha mentioned, you all talked about the non-academic needs and how important those are to academic success. And I, I think you'll find up here certainly unanimous that we feel strongly the same way. So we really appreciate those comments and those thoughts and the work that you do and the work you continue to inspire out in the field as you, you're hitting the road and making trips throughout the state. So as you speak for all of our Kansas teachers, we thank you for what you do for us and what you do for the state of Kansas. So it's great, and we've got questions lining up here for you. So we'll get started. First of all, Ann Ma.
Thank you. I had a question for Tabitha. Well, by chance, earlier today, we had a member of the public come in and ask us to rethink our commitment to preschool, that that investment just didn't matter. We shouldn't be spending our money there. So I'm wondering what your response would be to that.
I would probably hand the card of many people that I know that would defend this better than me, but I'm in the classroom every single day. So while I can't report the exact statistics that, that some of our legislators can that I met last week, I would say that you need to be in the classroom, following a child's journey, before you can ever make that plea. I don't know where the person is from that, that asked that. I do understand the need to, to identify where our highest needs are and to allocate money appropriately, and that is a huge job. But I think that it is research-based, that the more that you put in early in a child's life, the less repair you're going to have to do down the road. And so when you're faced with those facts, I don't think that you can say no to supporting early childhood education. And not all programs have to be full day. Not all programs even have to be five days a week. We see the progress on those things in communities like Winfield, but I think that the answer might be exploring, how can we give every child access to some sort of quality early learning programming? And I hope that answered your question. Okay, good.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great answer. Ben Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, congratulations. It's a high honor to be on this side and to hear all of you guys' passion and want for the best for your kids. Now, I want to send a message out and have you guys speak on this, because it comes better from you than me, to the districts that don't participate in the K-TOY program, and I've got a number of them in my district. Now, it is going up, so it is going the right direction right now, but the biggest pushback I have is, well, if I aren't a one teacher, all the other teachers in my district be mad. I'm like, that's not what this is about, not at all. So that's just one pushback that I've had. But talk about the good things that you see from this program, why every one of our school districts should be participating in this program.
Who wants to speak? There you go.
Yeah, we're all trying to decide who goes up here. Well, I'm from Clay Center, and I know my district participates in it, but last year was the first year we actually sent teachers on to Wichita so that they were able to join teams and travel. And I think last year's teachers came back and reflected with the staff on what a big deal it was to get out into other schools and be able to be a voice for teachers and students, let alone just see other school districts learning and how they go through. I think that's been the most powerful for me so far. I've been teaching six years, so I'm new to education, and so getting to see these incredible men and women teach and see their, their home settings, why they're so passionate and who they are, makes all of the traveling and the expenses worth it. I think sometimes the school districts that are smaller ease away from this program because if you do have someone you send forward, it can be a little bit pricey, but I think it's definitely worth it because our, our knowledge, what we're growing, both personally and professionally, is far worth the expenses that happen.
And that comes back to your district, to the rest of the staff, too, right?
Absolutely, yeah. Well, we're all pretty active on social media, so our districts are aware of that, but then when I'm back in the building, I'm able to share it. Also, I'm pretty lucky, my husband works in our building, so he kind of shares everything that's, that's going on on my travels, too, so that helps. But we're all pretty active, sharing everything we've learned with our principals. Sometimes maybe too active, we joke about that. We're so excited that we go back to our superintendent and our principals and share all of the amazing things we've seen.
Amy not being excited.
Anybody else on that comment? You okay? All right.
I think it's important to remember, yes, I will, important to remember the return on the investment that you are getting. I think, I mean, I saw, I saw my school district's numbers. They're spending $4,000 on my substitute teacher this semester, which is a chunk of money that they designate every single year, though, because they are hopeful that somebody will get nominated to be on this team. And we've had probably three in the last decade that were nominated, and never has there been a word of discontent to supporting that in my district. And we have a really supportive Board of Education. But not only that, you know, when I was in Wamigo, I was texting the Chamber of Commerce Director, who I know with great ideas that I saw there. So not only is this impacting our schools, but it's impacting the growth in our community. And I think that when we can see that, we, we are more likely to invest. And also, we're talking to future teachers. We're cultivating the next crop of people who are going to take our jobs. And when they come up to us after these presentations as part of our job, speaking at all the Kansas universities, we are seeing that we are getting to do a little bit of that inspiring. I remember when the K-TOY team came to my college, and I never, ever in a million years thought I would be here, but somehow I ended up doing that, and it's an honor to carry that torch and to inspire the next generation of teachers. So there is some work going in on recruitment, too, in the K-TOY program.
Okay, come on.
On the lines of that, I was going to say that, you know, we heard a lot of superintendents speak to us about teacher retention, and a lot of it was our smaller, tiny districts. And they talked about how difficult it was to keep teachers and retain teachers. And I have had teachers from all over Kansas contact me on social media, the small, tiny districts, talking about, I saw your video, there was a student at Emporia State that's traveling to go to a small district and teach because she was so inspired by what she saw. Like, like Tabitha said, it is an investment, but it's an investment that will help them keep the teachers in that smaller district when the justification is we're too small to get teachers. That's what we're doing. That's one of our main focuses this year, so I just wanted to add that.
As Tabitha mentioned, you might think about it, it costs the district $4,000, eight of them $32,000 out of $4 billion. That isn't a very high percentage. Most of us can't figure that small a percentage. Okay, next question.
Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I heard some of your stories, or most of your stories, not everybody, I don't think was in Overland Park, and some of them were videos, and then I heard you down in Wichita, and I'm hearing, and everything, it changes every time, which is very, I love it. It's like you have new things to bring to, to your audiences. And I wondered, as far as when you're going through and you're meeting with new schools and you're meeting with other teachers and legislators, your, your story obviously is going to keep, you know, keep changing, bring us more insight on what's going on. Do you think that that's inspiring as far as changing that along the way, you're learning more, gaining, gaining from each other? I would say, what's your biggest, some of your biggest obstacles as you travel through, through the state?
I think there's a common theme for all of our presentations and its connections. And, you know, some of it is informed by what we hear from each other. And I think one of the things also that was a choice with our group this year was to start meeting every time we go out with, what we call Future Educators Forums, and meeting with middle school and high school students. And I'm from Dodge City originally, but we're going out to southwest Kansas because our district, Steph and I's district, I think only 21% of people nominate for K-TOY, and we need to grow that part and find educators. And so it's been, it's been a part of our mission, I think, really, to, to get with younger people even. And so when we're out in southwest Kansas, talking to Newman and, and hitting on this piece of having students reflected in their teachers in that part of the state and all over the state, we arranged to meet with their Future Educators Forum at the high school and middle school there while we're there that day, even though none of us are from there. So that's a big drive for us. And so I think our message has been about connections, and it's always informed, it'll be informed by you all. It'll be informed by you all. We'll take what we did here today, you know, and, and move on. So, so yes, thank you.
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all, and congratulations. We've heard somewhat about school districts that have not ever maybe provided a name of a, of a teacher, or have in the past but are not now. So are you actively talking to those districts and as well as those that are, have been already participating? And could you tell us sort of how you also come up with your ideas of what you all want to focus on as a team? And kind of give us an idea of maybe the breadth of, of your outreach?
After we went to the symposium at K-State as our first thing we did together in November, was that November? We were struck with some information about how few people are nominating for Kansas Teacher of the Year. So we thought, man, we really want to talk about this. We want to talk about how we're celebrating our teachers and how good it feels to be celebrated for what you've done right. You know, I love when it, when it's time to get my review from my boss, because I like to hear what I'm doing wrong and what I'm doing well. Really builds me up and gives me some constructive ways to improve. Now, not everybody's like that, so that's why we need to focus on K-TOY, which really celebrates people. But I plan to make that a part of, you know, I have 25 requests this week to go out and speak to different school districts in the upcoming months. I have a segment, like a slide that I plan to show that is about the process of nominating for Kansas Teacher of the Year and what it's done for our community. And I have a quote from my superintendent that I plan to share. We've even toyed with the idea of, like, hey, can we make a stop in some of these places and just go and visit? You know, I wasn't invited to Seaman School District, but I went when I was in Topeka recently, and I'm sure that they nominate because the person I was visiting has been nominated before. But there are places like that and things we could do, but we hope that through, again, through constructive and intentional use of social media, too, that we're also putting some things out there, which I feel like is an area we're growing in. Even last year's team has said to us, oh, my gosh, you're putting so much more on social media than we did. Like, good job, way to go, guys. And that's definitely a part of our plan. But as for our way that we create, what we're going to talk about, you know, we just started out with an agenda at our first meeting together, and we each took some time to talk about what we were passionate about, and then we looked for overlapping themes. And, you know, like you had said before, that's changing every time we talk. Every night, we're on GroupMe or on email, talking about what we should change about our presentation, things that we like, things that we need to include, things that we need to take out. But what you're seeing right now is things that we are truly passionate about, but like Sean said, every experience we have is informing what we think that people need to hear. And so we're completely reformulated the way that we're doing Washburn today because of what their needs were as a school. And I think that's indicative of our skill as reflective educators. But I, you know, some, this is something I need to work on. Did I answer your question, or do I just keep talking about things that I want to talk about? Did I answer your question? Okay, great. I will point out, too, that when I go to the National Teacher of the Year interview, we've been given a prompt to give a keynote, and it's, how do you leverage teacher leadership to improve educational outcomes and school culture? And I feel like I am in the best place to come from to answer that question, so thank you.
I gotta stand behind this thing, okay. I think this is guarding you from me. I don't know, I think this is purpose they placed here. Here's, will y'all give me a moment of your time? Can you all shake out your hands for a moment? Shake your hands out, shake them out. I know, I'm going there. And with those hands, I want you to make a connection. Come on, Mr. Roberts, play along. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Now, I want you to think about that, because from where you're sitting right now, this is what your day is all about. Making connections, taking topics that these folks, these eight over here, are giving you and making connections of how we can make Kansas greater. Now, we're taking that exact movement, making connections within our classrooms with our students. You see, we've left our students behind to take this journey, to carry the banner for the greatest career on earth, the career that makes all other careers possible. Now, put your connection back up. Help me out, help me out. Put your connection up. There it is, Dale got this. We gonna work, Dale, it's okay. We got, we got something to help you with. This exact symbol is what we're also carrying across Kansas. Pre-service teachers, future teachers, need to understand that they're not alone. They got a crew of us, 150 years' worth, a crew of us that are ready to take them in and teach them the ranks and tell them to be bold and courageous, carrying the banner, because that's what this group is doing for all this year and carry forward, because we don't ever shake the title. I'm not all about titles, y'all, but I do like to use that title. Yes. So to hopefully answer your question, ma'am, making connections is what this year is going to be all about. Thanks.
I have one more question. Mr. Porter.
This is really not a question, but it's an encouragement. First of all, to follow up on what Ann said about early childhood, the criteria that was used was simply a test score in the fourth grade, and that's a misconception. Every one of you have talked about something other than academics. And as we deal with people across the street and others, there are those that still want to judge schools on a base, on a test on one day. I really liked what you said, and I think everybody on that side of the table and on this side of the table know that, but everybody in the state doesn't. So I just want to thank you for talking about the social emotional needs of students, and that is critically important for success, and encourage you to make sure that that message is delivered every time you speak to anybody. And I would also expect you to make those connections with the legislators in your area. Some of them are very supportive, some of them are very not, are not, but that doesn't matter. We need to build relationships with them. Thank you. Madam Chairman, just a quick, quick story that relates to the early childhood. Talking to a senator yesterday, and he calls his granddaughter, who's had a baby, and said, have you read to her today? And if he, he says, if you haven't read it for her today, I'm coming over and I'm going to do it. And that's pretty good. I mean, he said, if you either, if you're not doing it, that's important. I'm coming, I'll be there in a little bit. And this is a senator. I thought it was pretty cool.
That's very cool. Well, just to add my thanks and congratulations, we do have some certificates, and we want to take a picture with everybody, so we, we certainly need to do that. We'd like to, and you know, just like the other board members have said, we really want you to encourage folks, because the social emotional support is what drives the kids to be more successful and be, do better academically, and you all know that. It's not fluff time, it's not anything. It's what allows them to develop those soft skills, those employability skills that you get later and folks want. The employers want that, they need that. When we go out and talk to employers, that's what they want. So this, this support and what you're doing is important. So we just encourage you to continue that work. We're so excited of what you're doing, and as Dale said, this is the best hour we spend. It's great to have you all here and share some stuff. It just kind of reinforces everything we do and a lot of the decisions we have to make, have to do through that lens of what's best for, for you people in the classroom with the children. So we are going to take a minute for pictures.
Who you got, who you got first, Madam Chairman?
Well, we're gonna, we'll just, we'll, we'll start, and then we're going to take a whole big group picture.
All right, real good. Who's first?
Can I ask? This is a question I meant to ask earlier, and I forgot, but it's my favorite question to ask, and I want, if, I mean, kind of be quickly, well, I guess we still have some time, but who inspired you to become a teacher and what about them inspired you to do what you do?
All of us?
But, you know, don't go eight minutes.
I won't, I won't go eight minutes, I promise. I'll let everybody talk. I, I think you're going to hear collectively from most of us that it's going to be people I, I think you're going to hear collectively from most of us that it's going to be people we've run across growing up, but mine would be my fifth grade teacher, Sarah Creeter, she's still a teacher, and my mom, who is also a teacher, just being able to be in her classroom every day after school and get to kind of practice those skills as a little one is what drew me into this.
So, I'm a third generation educator. My great grandparents taught in one-room schoolhouses in Cedric County. My parents both taught. My cousin teaches, generation number four, is at the University of Idaho in Ag Ed. It's part of my DNA, but it was reinforced by some high school teachers in particular that took me under their wing and said, I think I see great things in you. And they were at the banquet. So, they were us.
So many influences. One that sticks out to me all the time and I get to talk about her is Janet Rogers. Five-one rock star woman could see to my soul from the moment she met me at the door. She met kids at the door before it was cool and you do a little handshake. She was doing that way back in the day. She believed that children need champions. And to this day, she's 91, and to this day, on Facebook, she still connects with me and she's my champion.
I will be quick, I don't remember the name of the teacher who inspired me. I was the social emotional trouble bad kid in school. I didn't expect to get out. But I had one English teacher in the ninth grade when I went to school for two weeks and she read my writing and told me I had a responsibility to share my talent. And I'd never heard that before. So, knowing that that woman made me feel empowered by just telling me one thing I did well, I knew I wanted to do that for kids like me in the classroom.
So, I was that nervous anxious kid and my second grade teacher would sneak me crackers when I had a stomach ache or I was trying to avoid another student that wasn't kind. And I just felt like she was such a difference maker. I knew that I wanted to do that for kids that were like me.
I'd be doing a disservice if I tried to name names because there was too many. But if you ask anybody, I probably wouldn't be up here just because I was a little bit of a troublemaker. And so, it was those, it was those teachers that put their arm around me and sometimes also said, hey, knock it off, or, or those things. But the people that were very intuitive and, and could read what I needed and when I needed tough love as well, so.
Although I came from a family of educators, what really inspired me and what made me want to be a teacher was my own fourth grade teacher who created such a safe environment and such an environment with all 32 of us in that classroom, in which I knew that I wanted to learn and I loved learning and I loved to come in there because I wanted to see her also each day. So, that was, that was my inspiration.
So, teaching is not in my blood. My home life was tumultuous. My parents told me not to become a teacher, I wouldn't make any money. They weren't wrong about that part, but we're doing better. I became a teacher because school is my safe place. It was a place where I could succeed and get positive reinforcement and know what that felt like. Countless elementary, high school, secondary teachers threw, threw into me what I hoped to throw into my kids. But I really made up my mind when I, my dual credit college Spanish course, we were able to go down and teach Spanish to preschoolers. And I saw how that teacher affected change in her classroom. And I was so inspired by that, that I opened my door any moment I can for students to come in and observe because I think we have to see it in action in order to know if we really can hack it. And if we can love it, and we all do.
Kansas Teacher of the Year team, you guys continue to do your great work. We sure appreciate it. Okay, we're just about all here. Okay, let me get to my agenda item. All right, we are getting ready to actually act on two different sets of higher education program standards. And we are acting on the higher education health, education pre-K. And in your agenda, this is on page 70, board members? So, Catherine is here to join us today. And I think you probably have some folks here also to, to join you. So, welcome.
Yeah, I have Dr. Kyosu Bun Hong from Emporia State for Health Education and Dr. Edwards from Baker University for Physical Education. And I'm here to present to you the final draft of these two preparation program standards. So, these are for the higher eds to use in designing programs and then monitoring and reviewing preparation programs. So, different from the, the P-12 standards that are used in the districts.
And these are both action items today as, as we received them last month.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, yeah. So, just to remind you, there are two different types of program standards. There are the pedagogy standards, the professional education that are used across every single content area, and then the content specific standards for each endorsement area. And because you have heard this before, I'm skipping along quickly and I will ask Dr. Kyosu Bun Hong to answer any questions you might have about health. And then depending on if you prefer to vote for each action item separately, and then we'll move on to physical education.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, do we have questions about the health education standards? Janet? I move that Kansas State Board of Education approve the new education educator preparation program standards for health education pre-K 12. That wasn't a question, but we'll take it. That's great. Okay, we have a motion and Mr. Porter just seconded that. Board members, discussion or questions at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor of the new educator preparation program standards for health education, please raise your hand. Okay, nine, and Mr. Roberts out of the room, so he, he left. Okay, all right, so that's nine zero. Okay, you didn't have to answer any questions at all. See, what a great job. Now, we'll see how PE is, see if, see if you get off as easy, huh?
Debbie.
Okay, Mr. Porter.
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the new education preparation program standards for physical education pre-K 12.
You may be going to get off easy too. So, we have a motion for the physical education standards. So, in a second, by Deana Horst. Questions, board members? Questions, comments? Anybody? Okay, very good. We'll take a vote, we'll call for a vote on this action, please. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, it looks like a nine zero. No questions either. Well, thank you all. We, we know you guys did a lot of work on this and we really appreciate it. Catherine, thank you for bringing these to us. And these will be great to get out to the programs throughout the state so they can put these in action. And I would guess maybe they kind of already are, so.
They try to get ready in advance.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We're terribly sorry we didn't give you a bad time.
I don't mind. We got to listen to the Kansas Teacher of the Year. It was, it was amazing.
Okay, our next, next item today, another exciting opportunity here. This is a recognition of the National ESEA Distinguished Schools. How, how much fun is this also?
Yes, this is a nice trip for me every time, every February to come down and present our two schools.
So, Tate, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we bring before you our two ESA distinguished schools out of 73 that were named this year from all our Title I schools across the nation. For some of you, this is what used to be the Title I distinguished schools and this is now the ESEA, the second year we've done that. So, as I do a little explaining, I'm going to ask Ruth Clark to go ahead and come on up here. As Ruth Clark is our representative for category one, the exceptional student performance for two or more consecutive years. And they're from the Hayesville School District. And what we've asked our districts to do today, or our actual schools to do, is to talk a little bit about how they've achieved the success they've had and then share a little bit about their experience. Because myself, some of our staff, some other districts across the state, and these two schools were in Atlanta last week for the ESEA conference where they were put onstage in front of the whole conference to receive their distinguished schools. Then after both schools have spoken, will be you ready to take any questions? And I think we'll have a photo op after that. So, let you guys come on up.
Hi, short person, sorry. And really short. Okay, so I have Dr. Burke, our superintendent, and Wendy Welner, who's our learning facilitator. And we took a team of teachers with us. However, this is conference week, so rather than have them reschedule everything, I decided not to pull anybody from, from the building. But really, I think the one thing that makes us so successful is the support we have from you at the state, but the support that we have administratively at our district that give us the ability to do what we need to do, provide the resources, provide us programs like Capturing Kids Heart, because we know that if we have their hearts, we, that we pretty much can help them do anything. And that's a big part for us. But the one thing about Ruth Clark, I think, is we're just a family. So, each kid is each one of our kids. There's not anybody there that ever says, it's not my job. It's what can I do to help regardless of what it is, even sometimes at their own expense and time. So, it's just doing what you have to do. It's, it becomes more challenging each year as we see new social emotional things. But again, our district is addressing that with the help of the state through the Second Step Program, so we're implementing. But it gets tougher and tougher, you just work harder and harder and, and hopefully teach them the work ethic that my staff models for them as well, that through hard work and perseverance, you can accomplish great things. So, thank you very much for the opportunity. Does anyone think you want to add? That's who we are.
John, you don't, you don't want to talk? Okay, I thought, I thought we could get you up there.
I just want to say how important it is to hire great people.
And it is very important, you are right. Well, having myself and I know Jim McNeese has, has the Hayesville District also, and we've been to your school. So, it's a great honor to get to go to your school and we see why you've been honored. Again, you've done such a nice job with everything that you've done at Ruth Clark and down at Hayesville. So, appreciate your, your efforts and what you do there. So, can, can see why you're, you're moving forward. Yes, Ann?
I just want to say that I knew Ruth Clark because my mom, Evelyn Clark, taught with her. And she was a great lady and you guys are really honoring, you know, what she stood for too.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And I think we'll do the next one and then we'll come back for pictures and.
Our next school, which qualified under the second category, closing the achievement gap between student groups, is New Stanley Elementary School out of the Kansas City School District. A lot of times we get, what do we look at for the data? We look at closing the gap between.
Come on up.
Yep. Come on, come on. We look at closing the gap basically between our free lunch students and our non-free lunch students because that's one of the keys to where ESEA is, it's poverty driven and it's a program that we really look at helping our kids that are in poverty that need the most help. So, I'll turn it over to you guys, whoever would like to speak.
So, I am Shania Roberson. I'm the principal of New Stanley and I brought my fabulous team with me.
I'm Kenya Yarborough, I'm a third grade teacher.
I'm Andrea Madergal, a fifth grade teacher at New Stanley, 22 years.
Janice Mahoney, I've been teaching since 2001. This year, I'm third grade and last year at New Stanley.
Thank you for having us. I'm Jenny Corville and I teach fifth grade.
I'm Jennifer Maddox and I taught fourth grade and it is my 14th year at New Stanley.
I'm Dawn Spencer and I teach fourth grade.
And I am Mark Hall and I teach fifth grade.
I'm Charles Faus, I'm the superintendent and I am most impressed of all the work that's going on in the district. So, thank you all.
I just wanted to start off by saying that I do have some things I want to share. And I did enjoy the conference, but they gave us 30 seconds onstage. So, it was a little challenging, little challenging to say all the things that you would like to say about your staff and your students and your parents and your community that holds you up. At New Stanley, again, as I heard prior, we are just a family. And we are family inside the building and outside the building. It is truly a neighborhood school. We have 350 students, only 15 take a bus. There is one bus. The rest either walk or get dropped off. They live in the neighborhood. And so, parents are working really, really hard to make sure, A, that their students are at school each and every day, and B, that they're, they're ready to learn. And we do the rest. And so, with my team in mind, with the district in mind, we've taken on the challenge of excellence is required. That's our district mission right now. And so, we're going to make sure that that happens. And we're starting off by closing that achievement gap between our subgroups. We've done some fabulous things in the past and we want to continue to do that work. Just want to share with you a little bit, you, you probably know the data, you've looked at it, that we decreased our Level One for our white students by 35.3% from Level One to 23.8%. We decreased our Level One from 46.4% in 2017 to 19% and increased our Level Three and Four from 17% in 2018 to 2019 to 33%. And that's just for our white students. I know this was, this award was given for our free and reduced versus our full pay, but those are some other awesome things that we're doing. Also, our spring data showed us that 39.3% of our students in math, that was our highest average, were proficient on the cap test. And we took our most recent interim and just about every category, we have 35% or more of our students who are making, who are proficient. And we're continuing to make gains. Our goal is for 100% of our students to be proficient. That is ideal. And so, we're just very, very excited about that. I'll let a couple of my teachers tell you how we do that, how we have made this achievement.
I do want to say that going to the conference verified a lot of the things that we do at New Stanley. One, building those relationships, we've heard that. But two, instilling that belief within the student themselves, knowing that they can, they will achieve greater things. We start that out by our school counselor sets up tours around college campuses. Three years ago, unheard of to take elementary students to college campuses. But the reality is, our students are able to see themselves there. This is where I'm going. They start their plan out. I had fourth graders going into fifth grade because I would loop saying, I think I want to go to K-State. I'm going to choose that school over another. Or thinking about, is Baker a better option or is Kansas, KU, a better option? Looking at how much it's going to cost, looking at how far it is from home. They're starting to make those realistic dreams come true, like setting that plan in action. And that starts young. So, knowing that they can achieve more than what they thought when they first walked through the door is very important. So, setting goals. Every time we have an FA conference, which is Family Advocacy, we help our students set a goal, talk to their parents about a plan. What is that plan of action? How are you going to get you there? So, that's coming up this week. We do that tomorrow and on Friday. So, I do want to say one more thing. I know our family is really a believer in how do I make our lessons go smoother, but how do we make it so that each one of our students has access to the content? Because every student learns it a different way. And so, we have team members onboard that are going to come into that classroom, help us get smaller groups and really get at, how do you as a student best get to the meat of what this content really means? What is that standard? And how does it look like? What is success? So, really talking about all of those success pieces all the way through. Thank you. I think that's it. Just want to say thank you, thank you very much. And we're going to continue to do the hard work and we hope to be back.
Yeah, year two. Well, we were glad we could give you more than 30 seconds. But what, what a great accomplishment of both schools and what a great honor. Obviously, a lot of hard work, lot of really focusing on kids and families, relationships, and getting those, that good core academic work taken care of. I'm sure Janet's going to want to make a comment or two, would be my guess. Yeah, that's my name. I am so proud. I cannot tell you how proud I am, not surprised, because I know how great you guys are. I have seen you in action and I know what you're doing and I cannot thank you enough for what you're doing. And, and as I've told you many times, you are my heroes.
And as I've told you many times, you are my heroes. And I want you to know that I think the only thing you're missing to ensure that is a cape, and I think the superintendent probably ought to buy y'all capes. And I would suggest that for this district also. Thank you so much.
Commissioner has a comment, or two or three.
So I think it's appropriate that we honor the yes to distinguished schools and districts, really. Because I think about both of your journeys, and John, you and I have had this conversation. This isn't the first time Hayesville's been up here and been recognized either as a Blue Ribbon School or as a distinguished school, and that takes a collective hard work. And the work that you've done in Hayesville over a number of years to just change culture has just been tremendous. So I want to say that. And then same thing at New Stanley and across KCK. You know, this isn't easy work that either district is going about doing. It's meaningful work, and just in, as we look at the closing achievement gaps, in the short duration that we're honoring that, the remarkable movement that you've seen, and I'm confident will sustain, I think just gives credence and vision to all other school districts that if you really believe in something and you focus as a unit, as a staff, right, in another area, and really have the kids and the families best interested heart, you can achieve great things. So I just want to say thank you to both school districts.
I'd echo that sentiment. We really appreciate you coming here today. I mean, we know it took some time out of your day, but this is such an honor for us to get to hear from you and the great work that you're doing. And I'm pretty sure I'll probably be down to Ruth Clark before long. I imagine you guys will have Jim and I come down, which is a great honor. I imagine Janet will be over to New Stanley before long, would be my guess.
I will be there.
So, and what we'd probably like to do is take, like each school, take a picture with a board member for that district. I think probably you've already had a certificate, would be my guess.
Right, and they don't have capes, but they both brought their banners, too.
Okay. We'll get the banner out there, too. So let's take a little time and take a few pictures. And board members, after that, we'll take a break, and yes, how about a little round of applause for... And we will come back to item 15, which will be the PPC. Item 16, Cheryl Johnson's here, and she's going to present the first Kansas Certificates in Child Nutrition Management. Very exciting.
Yes.
Another wonderful, exciting celebration today. This is great.
I like celebrations.
Oh, yeah. We're doing, we're three for three today. This is great.
Really great.
So welcome.
Thank you. The Kansas Certificate in Child Nutrition Management is a state-recognized certificate sponsored by the Child Nutrition and Wellness Team, and it's endorsed by you all, the Kansas State Board of Education. You gave us that endorsement way back in April 2015. It was developed in response to the USDA Professional Standards Rule and allows an alternate path to meet hiring standards. And so it's really important for our Kansas school districts to have this additional flexibility. To receive a Kansas Certificate in Child Nutrition Management, at least 120 hours of specific KSDE Child Nutrition and Wellness Management classes developed specifically for Kansas child nutrition professionals must be completed. And I've given you the updated brochure with our new logo on it, so you can see the classes that these folks have had to complete in order to earn this certificate. Managing and leading a child nutrition program is a challenging job, and you have to have a wide range of knowledge, skills, and abilities. The goal of the certificate program is to recognize those managers and directors who have completed the rigorous professional development to increase their knowledge and prepare them to lead their child nutrition programs to excellence. Today, the Kansas Certificate in Child Nutrition Management will be awarded to the first three school nutrition professionals to complete the requirements. It is an honor to introduce you, the inaugural class. So some of these folks have been working on this since 2015. I mean, it does take time, and their dedication is really to be commended and celebrated today. So first, I would like to introduce Kay Cox. And Kay, if you want to kind of come up, we'll be presenting some things as I read. She's the Food Service Director at USD 313 Bueller. She started working in child nutrition in 2000 as a four-hour, part-time floater. And if you don't know what a floater is, that is the person who can help anyone, anywhere, and knows all the jobs. She was soon promoted to baker, and she still loves to bake. And I think she's out there actually helping bake homemade rolls part of the time when people call in. I know. I'm sorry. She then worked her way up to manager, and she has been director since 2008, quite a while. She told me her favorite part of her job is when she has time to go to one of the five serving sites and work side by side with her staff to serve kids and talk to the students. When asked why she worked to complete the certificate in child nutrition management, she said, "I like to have knowledge to do my job. There are new things to learn, so many changes. There is a lot more to child nutrition programs than putting food on pans, and isn't that the truth? Professional development helps me do my job in an efficient way and incorporate new ideas and practices." Prior to this achievement, she has received the Bronze, Silver, Gold, and Platinum level of Child Nutrition Wellness Professional Development Recognition. That's over 250 hours, and this is another 150 hours on top of that. Kay's husband, Ken, is with her today, Ken, and also her superintendent, Mike Burblinger, who I just met, and we really appreciate you coming and honoring Kay today, too. She has three sons and two granddaughters. I can't leave that out. Congratulations, Kay. Jill Ladd, Assistant Director, and Cindy Johnson, our Training Director. We'll give you those. And once we are all three awarded, we're going to give you chances to have pictures with your board members, too. Martha Onick. Martha, will you come up? Martha started her career in school nutrition 30 years ago as a substitute in the Inman School District. She then moved to Fowler and served as a cook until 2005, when she became manager. While at Fowler, she led the efforts to complete requirements for Fowler School District to receive the Gold Healthier U.S. School Challenge Award. She was one of the first schools in the whole nation to get that recognition, and that resulted in invitation to USDA and an invitation to the White House. Martha and I were able to go there together, and that was an exciting time. Martha also worked at Monizuma for six years and is now back where she started. She's manager and director at Inman this year. The kids are the favorite part of her job. She pursued the certificate in child nutrition management because she likes to know what she's doing. Every summer, she takes as many classes as she can. Martha has also achieved the Goal Level of Professional Development recognition, which that's another 150 hours. Her mother, Mary John, is with her here today to celebrate her accomplishments, and she's overtaking pictures. So congratulations, Martha. And last but not least, we have Sheila Karinder. Sheila is in her 16th year at Caney Valley, but her school nutrition career started when she was in seventh grade and washed dishes on her lunch break. Sheila worked in the healthcare setting for many years as a certified dietary manager before returning to school nutrition at Caney Valley. She has served as kitchen manager and director, and her favorite thing about her job is the students. She stated her work is challenging but rewarding. She attends training for knowledge to help her in her job. Her husband, Bob, is with her today. There's Bob taking pictures. And he actually is one of the inspirations, as she told me, for what she does. He's an insulin-dependent diabetic, and she knows firsthand the importance of healthy eating. And she said it is her passion to make a difference in the lives of the children she serves, because she knows how important that is. I really appreciated that. Sheila has reached the highest level of KSDCNW Professional Development Recognition. She actually achieved the Diamond Level. We're going to have to come up with new levels. We have such dedicated folks in child nutrition. So she's had 350 hours of training to reach that. In addition to this 150 hours, that really is true dedication, don't you think? She has three children, one stepson, and seven grandchildren who she likes to spend time with when she has some free time. Congratulations. We appreciate it. So congratulations to Kay, Martha, and Sheila. What a great group to begin our awarding of certificates. And I think you'll see more coming now, but it just takes time to get all this training done and to gain all of this knowledge. So thank you for endorsing the certificate and allowing us to honor the folks today. They are definitely deserving.
Well, what a great accomplishment for all three of you and your districts. That's remarkable work that you've done, and obviously doing that nutrition for all those students in those districts. And I'm sure you've got a lot of faculty members that eat, too. Does your superintendent come and eat every now and then? Yeah, I bet he does. I bet he does. But your dedication, your honor, just as Cheryl said, and your passion for what you do is truly appreciated, and I know the students in your district really appreciate it, and we are honored to be able to support you with all that you have done. We would like to get some pictures of you with your local board member, and I think the commissioner will be in there, and I'll be there, so we would like to do that. First of all, we may have a comment or question or two. Ben Jones?
Just a comment. I want to say congratulations. Two of the three are from District 7. It's the entire Key 61 corridor between McPherson and Hutchinson and Inman. So I want to extend my public congratulations to be in the inaugural cap, to be 66% of the inaugural class from District 7. It is an honor to represent you here on the State Board, and you guys interact with the kids, and you're very integral in the education of our students. Even though you may not be in the traditional classroom setting, everybody is a teacher in a school, no matter what your job is. So congratulations, and also to Caney Valley. Let Jim speak to that more, because he's yours. But I'm very proud of the work that you're doing. Congratulations.
We're the other third. And thank you very much. We really appreciate what you do and very proud of your accomplishments.
What we'll do is we'll bring each, Michelle? Yes, please do.
I know how dedicated you are. My mother retired after 30 years. She was head baker at the school, and I saw how hard she worked, really early in the morning, at 4:30 in the morning. And she retired, and when she retired, they said they feel like four people left. Because she was just hands-on and always there and dedicated to her work. And so I know, after seeing my mom work for 30 years and doing that over the years, I know how hard you work. So appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll bring one person, each district up one at a time, do pictures up here. So we'll get set up and do that. This is agenda item number 15, Recommendations from Professional Practices Commission. And item, excuse me, 15A starts on page 85. And if you remember, we did table two cases from January. So the two cases from January are here on this first item. There's also, the first case that's listed is the new entry, the 19 PPC 08, that's the new one. And then 48 and 49 were the ones from January. Isn't that correct, Scott?
That is correct, yes.
And we also have, Scott's going to introduce, is this a new chair or just somebody filling in today?
Good afternoon. This is Jennifer Holt. Is on your screen. Linda was not available for this particular meeting, so Jennifer graciously stepped in and volunteered to speak.
Got voluntold.
Okay, voluntold to help us out and explain if there are any questions that you may have. But no, we don't have a new chair until June, I believe.
Ann, is yours a question for now, or for... 15A for all three of them, or just general, or...
Okay, number one, PPC 08, okay, recommend no discipline. The other two are recommended to be censured. I can't tell any difference between all three of them, except that number one was a guy, and two and three were girls. And I just think, I'd like some explanation as to why, when you read through it, like one of them said, "Well, she didn't seem remorseful," but in reading through the record, there was a letter showing remorse. So I'm not getting why number one didn't get censured.
Okay, I guess that's a question? That would be a question. Jennifer, I don't know if Jennifer or Scott.
Sure, I'm happy to speak to it.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
So in that situation, that these all do look very similar. The thing that made that case stand out very differently was the age and how newly certified, new to the profession the educator was. This is somebody who is very early in the profession, hanging out with a different, wrong group of people, who quickly saw the high level of consequences to his actions and completely rebuilt, owned his part of it, and was very remorseful, and has used it to build everything he does going forward. Versus the other two had been a licensed teacher longer. And one of them, the one where it mentions, didn't see, we didn't see a demonstration of remorse. I believe that email was sent after the fact, and so that didn't surface that day.
So PPC, the council did not see that email that she expressed remorse? You guys didn't see it? Okay, all right. Scott, do you have anything additional to share?
No, I don't. That's accurate, that the email that is included in one of those cases, that's the equivalent of someone asking the State Board not to follow the recommendation of the PPC. And so that was included in your materials. The PPC had not seen that particular email.
Okay, because the third one, it says, "Expressed remorse and apologized for misconduct," and she still got censured.
Is that the one that sent the email afterwards?
No, that's number two, I think. Unless I've got them mixed up.
She was remorseful that day.
Is this 48 or 49, Jennifer?
No, eight.
Forty-nine.
Okay, thank you.
It was more about how experienced mid-career, somebody who was at a different stage. So age is one of the things we discuss, age and maturity. So versus the first person, this was an early, early career educator who's made lots of shifts versus somebody who's held a professional license for an extended period of time.
Okay. Okay, board members, are there other questions? Jim?
Just remind me, please, the consequence of censure.
The, and I assume that question is directed to me.
Yes.
The consequence of censure is saying, "We censure you." And it is included in the final order that is published, indicating that the State Board, and I will tell you that I generally will frame this in the terms of, it's an acknowledgement by this body that you acknowledge there was professional misconduct. You don't approve of the misconduct, but it does not rise to the level of someone not being able to teach.
So if I were still in my old job, looking for applicants, would I know this automatically? How would I know that this person was subject for censure?
I will tell you that every time there's a discipline imposed against someone, that is sent out to a superintendent listserv. That's one way that superintendents are made aware. It is available on the KSDE website as a form of discipline, and candidly, that's it.
So I'd have to look for it?
You'd have to look for it.
Or remember that...
That's right. If you...
Six months ago, I got that email.
Yeah, if you're not looking for it at the time of an application, I'm not aware, and I've looked at several, applications for a job. I don't think that most job positions ask the question, could be wrong, but I don't think most of them ask if you've ever had your license disciplined.
Okay, thank you.
Our attorney has a comment. Mark?
Madam Chair, it is, without passing judgment on whether it should be or how severe censure is, I mean, it is the lowest level of discipline, so it would be considered discipline. And certainly, the PPC in a subsequent case could consider that as one factor as to whether or not prior discipline had been given, whether or not it's adequate for a particular cases for you to... particular cases for you to decide. But, you know, in terms of what it represents, it can have the cumulative effect if there's a future discipline.
And for what it's worth, just to be perfectly clear, the—if you sign a final order of censure, that is also passed along on the National Clearinghouse that NHTC hosts, so that other states are made aware that this body made that determination. Whether that impacts the ability to get licensed in another state, it's entirely up to that other state. Yeah, that's—I just want to make—that was one more thing that happens whenever it's a censure.
Ann Ma?
How much—you said number 108 was a new teacher. How much—how many years have the other two been teaching?
Did you hear that, Jennifer?
I think you're part of it. Say it again.
I'm sorry. You said number 108 was a new teacher. 48 and 49, how long have they been teaching?
Mid to late career. I don't remember the years exactly.
So there's a significant difference from the new teacher?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, when it says new, it says on page 88 of the board packet that in the first case was licensed since 2017.
So probably two years, one or two years.
I think the other big influencing factor in that first case was the ability to recognize very quickly the mistake and to really use that to shift his career trajectory and influence, what is he doing? How does he want to set a different role model, to be a different role model? He's the first in his family to attend college. He's very vested in the community and helping use that, his learning, in a positive way.
Any other questions, board members? I think I'm going to recommend that we vote on each of these separately. So when we say a motion, you will start with 19 PPC 08. You would make the motion for that one, and then we'll vote on that one, each one separately, because some people seem to have a little bit of concern rather than voting on them altogether. Ann?
So if you voted no, what would happen?
Well, it depends on how the vote of the whole board goes.
No, I mean, but let's say every—the majority voted no, what would happen?
Well, then there's a couple of actions. I think it either could—we could either direct it back to the PPC, and please correct me if I'm wrong, or the board could actually probably hold a hearing themselves. Am I wrong? He's trying to figure out how to answer that.
I think you either could send—if you wanted to, you could send it back to the PPC for further consideration. That's an option. Generally speaking, whenever this body does not follow the recommendations of the PPC for any reason, then you are tasked with making your own findings of fact, conclusions of law, and making your own determination as to what appropriate discipline would be.
And if I remember right, we did have to make our own findings of facts in one case.
There have been several instances where this body has—I would say you agree with maybe 90% of the findings of the PPC, but you don't agree with the end result. And that is something that would need to be made on the record.
Okay. Deana Horst?
Thank you, Madam Chair. From my readings of the first individual, you had—the department had recommended censure. Am I correct about that?
I will—I think I can fairly say that we initially filed a complaint in that case after the end of the evidence. The department suggested that if they're going to make a recommendation that his license be renewed—I believe it was up for renewal at that time—then he would be subject to public censure. The PPC, I believe—and Jennifer will correct me when I get this wrong—I don't believe it was unanimous. I think there was one—if I recall right, there were—it was 511 was the vote. Five people voted in favor of no discipline. One person did not vote in favor of that, and one person abstained because she had missed the first part of the hearing.
Well, I guess it concerns me that it appears as though we're treating the same offense differently.
We talked a little bit about the same idea. We really spun on—that's why we exist, to look at each case differently. If it was as easy as, hey, this is the offense, here's the automatic consequence, there wouldn't necessarily be a need to look at every case and go through the whole piece and hear the testimony. So we really tried to look at each case individually. I think overall, we do talk about trying to have similar line of reasoning to some extent, but really, looking at each case seems to be our primary role.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I apologize. To clarify a point that I think you may have been making, Ms. Horst. I always have on behalf—or the department, pardon me, always has the option of filing a response, asking you to review the findings of the PPC and asking you to not follow the recommendation. In this case, I did not make any such request. So in other words, the department on this particular case, if this proceeding defers to the PPC and whether you follow their recommendation.
Ben Jones?
Thank you.
This is maybe a question for the PPC, but in recent practices—and my memory could be wrong because I really didn't look this up—but any—all three of these were completed diversions, correct? The cases that are before us, the 08, the 48, 49.
Jennifer, can you hear that?
Yeah, I believe so.
What is our typical practice of diversion? Because it's a little different legal because they're not necessarily what convicted or it's not on their record when they completed a diversion.
Mr. Gordon might be able to share more, is that there's—we have consistently seen lots of confusion. People don't understand their legal obligation if they've accepted a diversion and what are the implications of that. So it is a point where there's often question and confusion.
But in the hearing, you do probably hear about their diversion.
That's often what triggers that they have to come in. They thought that since they had a diversion, it wasn't on their record and they didn't need to do anything. And then we flag it and see it, and then they have to come in.
So then you hear the evidence as far as what the diversion was involved with, and then you make your determination. And I, too, had thought these cases looked very similar. I think I read each of them three times to kind of get in my mind what it was, and it's helpful for me to hear what you had to say today. And quite frankly, I'm comfortable with your recommendations as the way I am right now. I think you've heard the evidence, and I'm comfortable with what you have shared with me again today. So I'm comfortable with that. Another question, Deana Horst?
Thank you. So because these appear to be the same, would that in some way cause these other two to appeal in their—the findings of the PPC? So are we putting ourselves in jeopardy to—by approving the difference in the three?
Madam Chair, may I respond, please?
Yes.
So the next step in the process, if all three were granted the license and the same outcome, and one was not happy with the level of discipline, their action would be to appeal to the district court. And then they would—the district court would give great deference to this body and the deliberations and the decision, and the court would look at the findings of fact and conclusions. They certainly could argue that there was a difference between the way that those were handled, but I'm also comfortable that you've had sufficient dialogue here about the facts and circumstances which have led to the outcome. And that's why we have this, because you defer to the PPC to hear all the evidence and make those recommendations. That's why you have those initial orders, and those are only recommended motions by the PPC. You're free to follow that, reject it, or find some different outcome. So the answer to your question is that they could certainly argue that.
Ann Ma?
Yeah, just one other thing. Since they all three went through the diversion, that implies these were first-time offenses for all of them, no matter—I mean, people my age have been known to screw up and do silly things. And so anyway, I just think we ought to do the same for all of them, and I'm not sure whether to go no discipline all three or censure all three or how that vote would work out, but that's my thought.
I guess I have to rely on my experience as an administrator, and I don't often say this, but when you look at discipline situations in a school, things that sometimes appear the same once you investigate are not. And, you know, I—I could say, having reread these three times, I really looked at them and actually talked to Randy one time about it, and then I was glad to hear Jennifer's conversation today. And I quite frankly feel comfortable with the recommendations as they are.
Madam Secretary—I mean—
Whatever. Oh, what's her name? Yes, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. Which Jim? I move that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of the law of the Professional Practices Commission in renewing the license in the case of 19 PPC-08.
Okay, so we've had a motion—excuse me, we've had a motion for—to accept the findings of fact and conclusions in just the first one, 08. Do we have a second? Mr. Porter? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Got it? Okay, all right. So that passed? Okay, that passed. Okay, do we have a motion for the next one? Mr. Porter?
I move the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the findings and facts of conclusions of law of the Professional Practices Commission in renewing the license of 19 PPC 48.
Okay, so we've had a motion to approve 19 PPC 48. Do we have a second? Okay, Mr. McNeese. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, got that one? Okay, then we are on to case 49. Do we have a motion for that? Ms. Clifford?
I move we accept the recommendations of the PPC on 19 PPC 49.
Okay, we have a motion to approve for 19 PPC 49. Do we have a second? Janet Wa. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay. Got that, Peggy? Okay, those are the ones that are grant, so that was 15A. Now we go to 15B, and these, if you're looking in your information, these are on page 103. And this is a denial. So Jennifer?
And then this one, I'm happy to answer any questions. They did not—like, we didn't have to hear this one, so this was a default, if I remember correctly.
So nobody even—the people did not come?
Mr. Gordon, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. I believe that's accurate.
Okay. Ben Jones?
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law of the Professional Practices Commission in denying the license in case 19 PPC 39.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Deana Horst? All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, and none opposed. Thank you very much. Jennifer, thank you very much. We appreciate you filling in today. Sorry we gave you kind of a hard time.
Tell them to shield you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving to Agenda Item 17, which will be to receive a Special Education Advisory Council report on the Transition Task Force recommendations. And Burt? Yeah, there he is. Burt is here and will present this information to us. And this is the transition one. I think, Burt, we may have you for a couple of items today.
I'll do the first.
Okay, that'll be great. Glad to have you.
Thank you. I have some handouts for you that I'm sure you will send around. You had referred the Transition Task Force recommendations to the Special Advisory Council that we look at them. So what we did was we prepared a document, which is coming around. It has the major points that were within the Task Force recommendations. And I'm going to give you a pause here to where you get that, because it's important that you be able to see that as we move forward. I will tell you that several members of SEAC are here, including Rebecca Helgett and Jim McNeese. We also have our ad hoc member, Rocky Nichols. So we have several here. We're almost there.
We're going to do a couple of short.
I've got another. I've got another. I've got two more if you need them.
Coming.
So what you're going to see here is the work that my department put together to find the major bullets of concern or issues to address within transition. So we have the Task Force recommendations in column one. In column two, we then listed out the training, professional development, and the IEP transition system. So what do we currently have available? Then we're looking at the second area where we're looking at immediate actions. What are we doing within six months? So we wanted to look at, okay, we're going to do some long-range planning, but we can do some short-term planning, too. So we looked at our existing assets and supports, then immediate actions within six months. Then our long-term strategies, more than six months. We wanted to be sure to address the board outcomes as we went along through this process so that they're all listed in the final column. A subcommittee of SEAC, by the way, met and put this together two weeks ago. So this is a work in progress. So if you go to the site and you want to find this online, you're going to see that there may be some things added to it because our committee is consistently and constantly working to update it. So we want you to be aware that we took this very seriously as a department because transition is one of my key areas when I came into this position. I'm concerned about the disconnect between graduation and post-secondary success for students with disabilities. And lo and behold, Jim Porter and Rocky Nichols have formed a task force, and we're already working on this with adult service providers, with a lot of agencies within the state, which I really appreciate the hard work that both of them did with that group that formalized these recommendations that are being brought to you now in this format. So what we've done is we have continued throughout the document to take that Task Force recommendation, which I believe you received at your last meeting. And we created then this document so that we would have a working document to address all of the bullets, because we felt that was critical, that we meet the State Board's requirement to report out to you the work that we were trying to accomplish as a result of that Transition Task Force. So do I move this slide forward or—
Yeah, push the spacebar.
The spacebar here. Here we go. So we received that report. As I said, SEAC members discussed and the proposed stages of implementation on January 15th, and that subcommittee met on the 31st. So we really put this document together for you all to have the opportunity to review and to hopefully accept it, because it's something that we feel is critical, that we continue to work on within my department. So from recommendations to action, we're identifying the existing assets and supports, and we're continuing to do that and look at that. We've implemented— to do that and look at that. We've implemented immediate actions. One of the things that we're planning is a transition summit. It will be held prior to the July leadership, where we bring our special educators together, our LCP folk, all come for three days, but prior to that, we're going to do a transition summit. And we were just talking about some items to include on that summit this afternoon. Before I came down here, we're putting together some targeted tasks that we want to accomplish, and one of those will be to work with Rocky and to work with the groups, those subgroups, to get those groups possibly in a panel discussion to come down and to talk to directors and coordinators and administrators of special education, so that they know what's available out there once a student graduates and walks across that stage. Very critical, because we've heard for years that many small rural areas are not aware of what types of supports they can access within their region. So we also hope to continue to build on a regional map, so that if you're, let's say, in Russell, and you want to see what resources are available for students with disabilities who are exiting school, you'll be able to find VR, you'll be able to find any type of adult service. If it's a CDDO, we hope that that has been connected early on in life for that very involved child, because that the earliest is possible, so they can get on the list, and continue to work for a long-term strategy that will go beyond six months, so that we can continue to address, how do we help our students with disabilities be successful on the job, to get certificates, and to find those opportunities in life, so they can have those happy lives that we want for all of our students that graduate from our schools. That's the heavy lift that I brought for you, so I hope you have some questions, because I know I had twenty minutes, but I knew I wouldn't be able to spend twenty minutes on that. So key elements to improve the transition, I've already mentioned the stakeholder group, focus on making resources accessible, provide information on effective practices, be intentional, and inclusion of skills and practices that improve transition in early childhood, because that was one of the issues we brought up. It needs to be a birth to graduation timeline that we follow, so we need to start as early as possible working on possible outcomes in transition services. Very important work that the task force told us that they wanted included, and then again, work with those organizations and agencies. I didn't want to skip that slide, because it's kind of important. So does anybody have any questions for me?
So I'm guessing, then, this is a working document at this point in time?
It is, and it will continue to be.
Continue to be.
We have the bulleted points, we have what we're currently doing, and we're adding to that. We then have the six-month plan, the long-range plan, so as we complete different segments of it, it will then be added to, and it will be updated continuously.
So, and I don't know, Jim, or Jim may be able to answer this. So this will be an item that we are receiving today, and then in the future, we will vote on to accept, or what's the plan?
That was going to be my question, you know, where do we go from here?
We know.
I believe you were going to have it last...
I believe we were going to bring it here and approve, or through consensus, or through a vote, to move forward with it, give our endorsement, yes.
Because today it says receive. I just wondered if we were, because personally, what I'd like to, rather than voting on it today...
Oh, no.
I'd like to be able to read it, you know, and take a look at it.
Well, there's still work to be done.
Yes.
Exactly. So the transition workforce brought you a series of recommendations. You gave that to CAC, and now you're receiving their plan, which you just got, and then in the next meeting, you would approve for them to go forward with this plan.
Okay.
They would then give you updates to the plan if you approve it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'd certainly appreciate any feedback on any of the items to myself or to Brett and, or Jim Porter, that you would have after reading it. It's pretty comprehensive. They've done a good job.
Well, we were given a heavy task and a heavy lift, and I pulled three department people. I want to give a shout out to Stacy Martin, Wendy Coats, and Dean Zikes, who really put the bullets together and sat down and came up with a preliminary document, and then we pulled CAC Subcommittee in. They added to it. We wanted to be sure that Rocky was there, so that his input was in this process, because we want to involve those outside agencies as much as possible, because that linkage is critical for the success of our students. So, thank you.
So this document, I'm sorry, Jim, you go ahead, and then I'll ask.
I want to commend everybody, because for what we do, this has been extremely fast, which I appreciate and wanted. And I would like to encourage CAC to continue to be involved. The transition work group is going to continue to work on other areas, because we have recommendations to other agencies. One of the things that I hope, and Rocky's back there, so you can correct me anytime I mess up, what I hope that we, that the group recommends is the ending of subminimum wage. That's not directly our responsibility, but I read someplace this week that some state had, just this week, abolished subminimum wage for people with disabilities, and perhaps support from CAC for some of those other areas would be something that we could, that would help us as we go to other agencies and the legislature for the purpose of making sure that our students, that the students and adults with disabilities in our state are treated with the respect that they deserve.
You have my vote.
That's really not a question. That's just a hope that you will continue to, you know, that sort of steps out of our lane, as I tell the commissioner, I'm out of my lane all the time. But I think that if we're going to make a difference for the student, for the people with disabilities, we maybe need to be active a little bit out of our lane.
The other thing, this is a start, not a finish, and when we prove this, we're proving that we move forward, but also with the understanding that we'll be back.
Yes.
But this is a great starting point, because so many people in the field know a part, or a segment, or have a view of it, but this gives a consistent view from across the state for providers at both the leadership level and the implementation level. You know, so this is a, and I could see this becoming embedded in the training, you know, for those who are going into special education and administration particularly, that will give them a really good roadmap. And all the stakeholders that have been part of this, and is an important, I think, validation of where we are right now, but also a validation of where we're going. Now, this is not, again, this is not the, we prove it, and okay, we can sit back and everything's done. No, this starts the work.
And as a byproduct, I would hope that we can change the culture of the IEP process. In many cases, not all, and maybe not even in most, but in many cases, that's more adversarial than it is problem-solving. And if we can, I would like to maybe as a byproduct, move in that direction, too, so we can set some parameters and some best practices, so that it can actually become more of a problem-solving, cooperative, collaborative process, that always keeping in the key, it's that student that's important, not the adults.
So...
That's the end of my sermon.
So this will be coming back next month. It'll give us an opportunity. Peggy, can we get this electronically?
Yes, we'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
We've got the link.
So we'll get that, and we'll come back next month and at least act to maybe accept it, and knowing that then we'll get ongoing updates as far as progress is concerned.
We'll keep it updated online, and as you need progress, I'll be glad to come down and provide it.
Okay. Any other questions, clarification questions, or other questions, board members? Okay, well, Bert, thank you very much for this particular item, and I think we've got you. You're not done yet.
Well, I'm going to have Rebecca come up.
Rebecca's coming up.
Yeah, she is the president of CAC, and we decided that we'd trade off. I didn't know that she was going to be here to provide this, but she said, I'll take the ED if you'll take the transition. So Rebecca Helgut.
That's great. Welcome, Rebecca. Thank you for coming.
Good afternoon, or should I say, good evening. Awesome conversation on transition. I was a part of that process, and just the collaboration and communication. It was definitely a speedy process. A group was put together and collaborated on a lot of thorough topics that the task force put together. And so Chair Bush and members of the State Board of Education, I just like to thank you for the opportunity for the Special Education Advisory Council to recommend to change emotional disturbance to emotional disability in the Kansas Special Education Statute and Regulation. So just a little bit of history. My name is Rebecca Helgut, and I am the current CAC chair. I represent the administrators of exceptional programs, and I also am a special education director in north central Kansas. And so this recommendation comes from CAC's charge to advise the State Board of Education of unmet needs and education of students with exceptionalities. And so in September nineteenth, at our first CAC meeting of the year, a public comment from Representative Blake Carpenter and Leah Grimm, a school counselor, came with some concerns with the current category eligibility, emotional disturbance. Some of the concerns were just the negative connotation of the name. Some of the concerns, which were very alarming, were some parents were refusing services based on the fact that they did not want their child with the label emotionally disturbed. And so the word disturbance did catch our attention as the CAC Advisory Council and its advocates. We definitely wanted to further pursue and discuss that term. And so in November, CAC put that on the agenda, and there was great collaboration and communication. My concern was, I did not believe we had sought out enough expertise regarding a named categorical name change. And so we felt we needed to do a little bit more seeking across the states regarding what they were using as an eligibility category for name, regarding emotional disturbance. We also wanted to seek expertise from national organizations and get a poll of how they felt making a name change, and we also wanted to recommend that the School Mental Health Advisory Council, along with the Kansas Special Education Administrators Organization, provide a little bit of input and recommend some expertise as well. And so from that meeting, it definitely was discussed that we needed to further gather information from experts across Kansas regarding that categorical name change. So in January, that two-day meeting that we also had breakfast with you and presented to the State Board, we had a panel of experts to provide some information to the council. On that panel included a representative of the Kansas Associations of School Psychologists, Kansas Association of Social Work Association, the Kansas School Mental Health Advisory Council, and the State Interagency Coordinating Council, which is your Part C, Bert, the three. They gave great information, provided some input, expertise, made some recommendations, and from that, we also gathered input from families together, along with community mental health centers through the Community Mental Health Center Director that also serves on that advisory council. From that, the discussion were the benefits of the name change, and the language, emotional disturbance, potential unintended consequences of a change, and then the specific focus of impact change was focusing on students transitioning from Part C services to Part B, and also students transitioning into post-secondary, and really looking at what those benefits or negative connotations could potentially be. The recommendations from that meeting, there were a great number of benefits in changing the term, especially for students and families. We discussed with the panel of experts, different change in terminology. Emotional disability was the only term that CAC recommended, based on potential negative connotations with other terms that were discussed. We do not foresee any unintended consequences. CAC does recommend that we need to ensure that families understand that this term, change in terminology, does not change their rights or eligibility with this category, and also continued communication with KSTE and families together to ensure that this message is being communicated to families, education, higher education institutes regarding what that looks like. Last week, on February fourth, there was a hearing of the House Education on Hearing Bill twenty-four eighty-seven. CAC, we were there to provide testimony as a proponent of the House Bill twenty-four eighty-seven. If language in the statute is changed, then CAC is encouraging the State Board to make the same change in the special education regulation. CAC recommends only a change in term, not a change in the definition or eligibility criteria for this disability category. On February sixth, the House voted to pass Hearing Bill twenty-four eighty-seven out of committee to the full House. And so CAC does support changing the term emotional disturbance to emotional disability in both Kansas Special Education Statute and Regulation. So I will stand for any questions, if you have any. Ann Mah?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you answered part of my question. It won't make them, as far as we're concerned, eligible for other services, but is this term emotional disability something that's recognized in the law in other places, or?
In regards to the eligibility category, I mean, the federal is emotional disturbance, but throughout, when we were doing some research from other states, there's a variety of different terminology that they use, but it does not change the eligibility category regarding the services for students with emotional needs.
So the feds won't care what we call it?
They do not care what we call it, but we cannot change any of the criteria under that category.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Rebecca? Okay, so this will come back. So if you notice in the second paragraph on the, this will necessitate both a change in statute, which is moving forward, and as you said, has moved out of the House Committee, and will have to go to the House floor, and then it would also necessitate a change in our special education regulations, as far as name change, but not eligibility.
Correct.
So that's the, how we'd be moving forward. So this is a receive item today. I would assume we'll be back next month with it for action, is what I would guess. Any further clarifications or questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and helping us out with this. Okay, we are on to legislative matters. We know who that brings in.
It's good to be here. They've introduced a lot of bills, and we're just covering the ones they introduced this year. Introduced a lot of bills. There's not very much activity been approved. Very few bills come out of the first committee, and there's not a lot of movement at the moment. Let's, we'll try to tell you what we think we know, and Mr. Porter and Ms. Horst can tell you the truth here in a minute, and enlighten us. Two-twenty is a bill that exempts the State Board from the provisions on issuing a license. Remember, that was an issue last year? And they had a hearing on it, and I, I'm not, I wouldn't bet money on it, but the examples we showed bothered them, that where the board had approved and took their license, even though they hadn't been convicted of felony offense. Remember that? And we've taken several licenses, and in all honesty, a lot of them is related to sexual activity, inappropriate, and so forth, and we've taken their license, and they agree with that, but they just didn't want to change, didn't want to add any more to the list, because they thought it might grow. So it's in the air, but we gave them, Scott Gordon gave them some language that would help us in that arena. So, and they were, the committee was kind of split. The chairman seemed to be helpful, but we'll see what happens there. We sent, just sent that language over to them, that would help us take care of that matter. Two-forty-two, if you have a disaster, and there's substantial ill... things destroyed in the agricultural improvement area, why you can adjust the tax and give them a tax abatement. 250, this is interesting. I didn't know we had a problem on this, but evidently we do. Senator introduced the bill, and you cannot discriminate due to hairstyles. And so that has been an issue for some evidently. 271-
We need to clarify, though, that this is not in opposition to Craig.
No, no, no.
Lack of hairstyle.
Lack of hairstyle.
No. Now, 271 is big time important. Big time important. This is particularly true to the high poverty districts, and for the Dodge Cities, Garden Cities, Kansas City, and it even affects Olahatchee, Shawnee Mission, because they have some buildings where the poverty is above 35%. It's about, and the governor put the money in the budget, 54 million. Money's in the budget to do it. All we have to do is get the sunset provision. I didn't bring that with you, but I've given that to you earlier. Remember? You've seen that. I think there's hope there that that'll happen. I want to skip a little bit. Some of these are, I don't think are very important. 276, and that's when a foster kid goes into comes into control of a contractor, for example. Those investigators are contractors. And maybe they put him in an office where they're at, and they're there for a while. The bottom line is that kid can go to school wherever they reside. I don't think that's necessary because I think the law says they have to anyway. They'll have to do it anyway. And schools don't argue that. But the bottom line, this would clarify it. 284, I was a little bit surprised at this one. This provides, you remember the disability placards that you can get? Well, some of the counties will issue them to school vehicles that haul kids that are disabled. Some of the counties will not, because they said the law don't allow it. This would allow that. And anyway, that for transporting in vans and Suburbans, put placards there. And the reason they wanted placards is not permanent, because those vehicles are driven a lot of times for other things, other than hauling kids. So, anyway, we did a little survey, a 24-hour survey on that, and most districts supported that. 294, now this is complicated, and this is going to get pretty sticky before it gets done, because it's the chairman of the Tax Committee that's pushing it. And here's how this works. And they had a hearing on it this week. Quite a few people from municipalities, cities, counties, governments come in unhappy. But here's how it works. Follow me. Now, Michelle, if I get confusing, will you stop me, all right? All right. You take the dollars you levied in a fund, amount of taxes you levied. Then, next year, when you get the new valuation, you divide in that valuation into the amount you levied and get a new computed levy, because valuation goes up. So the levy may have been 25 mils, but now you re-compute it, it's 23 mils. If you raise that levy, then you have to go through a process of telling everybody. And one of the provisions in informing them is you have to send a notice to every taxpayer in the district. And the county clerk does that. They're not thrilled about it. They ask to send that. Then the school district has to pay for it. Now, you publish all the budgets and all that, but this is an individual notice you get in the mail.
So, in Cedric County, where I live, I might get a notice from the school district, from the city, from the county. Who else?
Oh, township, water district, fire districts, anybody that makes levies. Give me an example of that. That's a good point. A few years ago, something came up, and I don't know why I remember this, but Potawatomi County, a rural county, they had over 100 different taxing units.
Wow.
You with me? With cross, the different sections, 100 different taxing units within that. So, anyway, if anybody's a budget over 5,000, that's the way it come out.
Now, the state wouldn't be so hypocritical as not to include the 20 mils they tax for schools, right? They're just going to take the money and run?
If it's tradition, that would be exempt. If there's tradition, that'd be exempt. You're meddling now. Yeah, that'd be exempt.
Yeah, state doesn't have to play by the rules it wants everybody else to play by.
But in that case, like that, for local, and the other thing is, now think about this. When you decide what your mill levy is going to be, and you know what it is, then you've got to go through this process, notifying the county clerk. The county clerk's got to send all the notices out, have a follow-up hearing on it. It would be very difficult to get it done within the timeframe that you have to publish the budget. Timeframe would be difficult. 295, this is another interesting thing. This is a pick on Mr. McNeese. Janet, he would do this, I think. In 295, it says if you, your valuation, you can't increase evaluation solely as a result of normal repair, not a big deal, replacement or maintenance of existing structure. Replace it. So you tear it down and you replace it? I could see where somebody, you know, might have an old junk piece of junk, and then replace it with a new structure, and the valuation would be significantly more. Well, you couldn't increase the valuation if you did that. There would be abuse, so that's my point.
Yeah, I'd be one of those.
Pardon me?
Fairness school, helping this school.
299, now this don't affect you, but it would affect some of your constituents. Right now, if anybody, if you run for office under the Campaign Finance Act, the only district that comes under that would be over 35,000 kids, and that's Wichita. They come under the Campaign Finance Act. Nobody else does. I don't think anybody's got more than 35,000 kids in a school. Now they lower that to 5,000. So anybody over 5,000 kids, the board runs for office, they come under the Campaign Finance Act. So about all your districts would in Johnson County, except maybe Spring Hill. So the board members that come under the Campaign Finance Act, reporting and all that. This is another interesting, 301, it in essence freezes the valuation of utility for three years. So whatever the valuation is of the utility, it's frozen for three years. Rest of it could go up, but not that one. 317, you don't need to worry about that. That's one, that's Bruce Givens' bill, where you, for computing special ed, state ed, you use the prior year's number of teachers. And in 318, why, that's the one that implements the State Board's suggestion. Any money carried over will go to schools for special ed, if there's any current appropriation. In all honesty, if we get some money, and I think there's a chance yet, not that much, but we'll get some for special ed, I think. But they won't do it that way. They'll just put it in the appropriation bill. 335, this entry, this come out of Wichita. You know, right now, if a junior or senior wants to go to the technical college, community college for VOTech, they can do that, and the state pays the tuition. What Wichita is saying, if we want to contract with a accredited university, and it could be private or public, that other than for academic courses, and do a dual enrollment, dual credit, why, you could do that. And so, for example, if a person wanted to go to a technical college, a community college, or four-year university, whatever, they could, the school district could make a deal with the university and their community college, and they'd pay X number of dollars for a, maybe a language arts, English class, psychology class, college algebra, do one class. Anyway, they're trying to help those kids get started. Let's see. Where's that, Craig? 3, oh, 337. The ACT test, it broadens it to non-public accredited schools. Now, I want you to know, we're going to talk quite a bit here, if we run out of time, about things we want to do for private schools. There's several bills on that. This is one of them. 353, this is interesting. They just have a phrase, just a phrase in the law that says that you appropriate enough money, sufficient enough to meet the standards. So, that probably, pretty likely lead you back to say, you know, they don't say they're going to give you more. You appropriate enough that you'll reach the standard. Some might think that's associated with the court case. 361 allows employees to have dues withheld from their checks. They have to agree to it and all that. 366, there's several bills on licensure. And the bottom line for most of it is, if they have a license comparable to another state and they come to Kansas, you've got 10 days to give them a new one. That's a big deal, 10 days. And the other thing, of course, they have to get a background check, and you've got 10 days to issue the license. 382, Craig, let's do it. This is kind of significant, and the hearing's coming up here in the very near future, maybe this week. Anyway, on the, remember the bond and interest? You heard me talk about bond interest, the state aid's going down? For example, Dodge City, Gene, when they had their bond issued in June of 15, their state aid, if they had one today, a new bond issued today, their state aid would be over 30% less than it would be if you had it prior to July 1 of 15. And if you look at this one, why, you'll see, you can see your district. And what this bill does, when you do the calculations, you leave Fort Leavenworth out. Right now, it starts at Fort Leavenworth, and Fort Leavenworth, Michelle, don't have any valuation. A Burger King, a Little Railroad, that's it, and a bank. And they don't hardly have anything. All federal property. So you start there, but they can't have a bond issue. They couldn't pay it back. So they can't have a bond issue. That's where they started, the lowest assessed value. They're exempting that, and you go to the real lowest valuation can have a bond issue. And if you look at that far right-hand column, that's the amount of state aid percentage that would go up. Now, get this. Only on bonds held, elections held after July 1 of 20. After July 1 of 20. There's, who's got Conway Springs? Jim at you? You got Conway? Their thing about having a bond issue, he called the other day. He said, would I come under this? No, he won't, because he's having his election in April. And if this bill passes, it'll be after July 1. It'd be awfully tempting. If this bill looks like it's going to move, I'd think about delaying it. For that kind of money, 24% of my payment every year for 20 years, I'd think about delaying it. But anyway, let them decide. 20, oh, I have to mention this. On your list, do you have 384 on your list?
Yeah.
You do have? Okay, that's on foster care. And what it says is, we have to submit statewide records on details on foster care. In other words, things like, are they on schedule to graduate? Did they graduate? What else is it? Remember?
Assessment results.
Yeah, the assessment results. There's several things we collect only on foster care kids. And then, and this comes Senator Baumgartner primarily. And the issue is, if we know the kids and who they are, we can run them down. The problem is, some school districts don't know. You get in a big district, they move in, they may not tell you. So unless somebody tells them, so that notice, knowing who they are, if we can do that, why, I think we can provide most of the data.
Submit it to who?
It becomes public, goes to LSCER. There is a strong interest over there on foster kids not doing well. And it is a problem area. They don't, their graduation rate's low and so forth. And 2450, Mr. Porter, aren't you the vaping man? 2450 treats vaping like tobacco, in essence. 2453, that's again, recognizing any professional licenses they got that come to Kansas, if it's comparable, you've got 10 days to give them a license. 2465, now this is one we had quite a Donnybrook last night on. Mr. Porter, you may want to comment on this one. This is tax credit scholarship, and it was passed out. We had a kind of a pretty hot debate on it, but it came out, and what it does, right now, the lowest 100 performing public elementary schools, and they're on free lunch, you can apply to SGO and to get a scholarship to go to a private school, regardless whether the private school is better or worse. Millionaires about that. And what this bill does, instead of 100 lowest performing, it's all schools, all 1,300 of them. Free and reduced. It also goes from free to free and reduced. So that will expand those 100 elementary schools, probably Randy made up, what would you guess, maybe 15,000 kids, maybe? Probably, it wouldn't be much more than that, 15,000 to 20,000 kids. This opens it up to about, closer to, well, everybody, headcount 490,000. Everybody. Now, except, free and reduced, only makes up 40% of that. So if it's 490, take 40% of that, that's who would become eligible.
One of the things that we testified and pointed out, that of those 100 schools, we ran a second list. And that second list included all, instead of all public elementary schools, it included all accredited elementary schools. And there were six or seven non-public schools on that list. So it would be conceivable or possible, under that law, for a parent who didn't know the difference, to transfer their child from a low-performing public school to a lower-performing private school. This, without, one of the points that we made in the testimony was that if parents are going to make those decisions, they need to make informed decisions, so that there needs to be, if we're going to judge schools on their performance, that we need to know where that performance is. Because if we expand this from 100 schools to every school, it is likely that parents, given the opportunity, would transfer to a lower-performing school without that knowledge. And so one of the things we pointed out, we didn't, you know, the bill was so ridiculous, we didn't want to make a big issue of that. But to point out that if they in fact want parents to make choices, we need to give them the data so that parents make informed choices.
Jim, they define-
They passed this bill out of that committee last night, and it remains what they do with it on the floor.
Lowest, yeah.
How, no, K-12 budget.
K-12 budget.
It passed, didn't it?
Out of that committee, didn't it?
Yes, it did. There was quite a discussion-
Based on test scores, Anne.
Quite a discussion before they voted it out. 2476, this is an interesting bill. You have to post the national motto in every public building, "In God We Trust," and also the U.S. and Kansas flag in every elementary and secondary school, library, and classroom.
Fiscal note on that.
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up, Madam Chairman. That's real good. This will all be financed with donations.
That's good.
Whose donations?
Yours.
This says, nope, no- This says, you, you, no, no, you have to get donations.
Do school districts have to get donations?
That will be...
That's a big sale.
No, no, that will not be a problem. Go to your local ministerial, and she'll have the money this afternoon. That's just fact.
Maybe some places.
All right.
Did they define what classroom means? Does that include like the ISS room and the nurse's office?
Nope, didn't define it.
I was probably adding it in there now, Ben.
No, didn't find it.
Gymnasium.
Okay, they also, I didn't get into this, because it doesn't affect us, also includes public post-secondary institutions. Think about, your K-State, they'd have...
See, put on their planes at K-State probably.
Twenty-four eighty-eight, allows school districts to maintain supplies of EpiPens, and they call them something else, but the inhalers. Twenty-five oh-six, that's another bill on military, got ten days to give them a license. Twenty-five oh-seven, this is interesting. This has been around for years, but nobody thought much about it. If a kid in high school goes out on the job, on the job working, you know, on job training, the businesses don't, do not want any liability. So schools give an authority to buy liability insurance for those kids that go out like that. Twenty-five seventeen, agricultural improvements that destroyed where you get tax abatement. Twenty-five nineteen, uh... This is, yeah, this is the one, isn't it? This has got a long laundry list of things about post-secondary institutions, like two and a half pages of things that they collect and all that, including private and public. There's an also a list of things the Department of Labor has. We're supposed to get all that, put it together, create a, a database, and make it available for high school seniors. And, and what's interesting about this is, we talked to the Board of Regents, Blake Flanders, and he says, we pretty much already got it. They got most of that, it's already there, according to him. And I said, if that's the case, then why are we doing this? And we sicked him on the sponsor of the bill, and so that, we'll see whether it happens. But that, if that's already done, there's no need to spend a whole ton of money on Twenty-five oh-six, that's the ten-day, had that one. Yeah, we'll be ready for it, Craig. Twenty-five, twenty-six. Twenty-five, twenty-six, that's the same printout I gave you, and in that last column, it showed you the percentage of state aid increase, if you did that. And you'll be surprised there, that, one, it kinda surprised me, even though I look at, I think, Michelle didn't, oh, they could get a little bit out of that, that printout I gave you, men to go for, I think they, I think they went, they're at zero now, I think, but I think under this, they'd go to something like seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. And this, this is, would really help Spring Hill, for example. There's, like, help everybody, but Spring Hill, they're growing about a hundred and fifty, seventy-five kids a year, so over three years, they gotta have bond issue about. Okay, we'll be ready for now, Craig. Twenty... Oh, twenty-five thirty-two, that's the cameras on school buses. And Mr. Porter, you wanna give a report on that? You was there yesterday, I wasn't?
Yeah, it didn't, the questions were really strange, and it just appeared to me that, I mean, it's a logical thing to me. We have a thousand people passing school buses every day, and we've come up with a, with a process that won't cost school districts any money, that will basically capture those people that do that, and, and will, and as, as in the other states, change behavior so that it is safer for students. The questions that kept being asked was, there's only two vendors in the United States, apparently, that do this. Neither one of them are in Kansas, and the questions came, why are we spending money out of state? You know, which is, it would be a legitimate question if we had a Kansas vendor. Craig was there, and he can probably, probably pay more attention than I did. I just was seething in the background, so I didn't, didn't pay much. But, but the questions just simply avoided the issue that we are putting thousands of kids at risk every day. And I hope common sense prevails, because this is a, this was, this was supported by, this, this sort of bill had been introduced in the past that had a criminal penalty and was not supported by law enforcement. This bill has a civil penalty, so it doesn't go on your record, and it was supported by law enforcement, because law enforcement was involved in our, in, you know, as a matter of fact, their, their lead lobbyist was one of the people that had the, was one of the lead proponents yesterday. I was very disappointed with the way the hearing went, and I thought that they asked questions looking for ways not to, you know, and, and I'm not as, you're gonna find this difficult to believe, I'm not as experienced as you are in reading the legislature. But what I read was a, a real reluctance to, to move on this, and to me, it just seems to be logical. And the bottom line is, we have, we are, it's gonna be a lot easier to pass this legislation than to sit at the funeral home with that parent explaining, well, we could've done something, but we thought it would be a little too difficult. And actually, I said that. But I don't think it resonated.
Tell you what, somebody gets hit, and there's been some close calls.
Well, there's been some deaths in Indiana.
The cameras would also play to privately run buses, so if a school district contracts with like, with like Durham and First Student and Kansas Bus and...
That, that wouldn't make any difference with a contractor, school, or whatever. The camera company, the vendor, we'd have to bid it, who are the lowest bidder. The camera money would put two cameras on the bus. Then what they would do, in essence, they'd get a picture, somebody run it, get the tag number, they would send it to us. We'd view the, if, if it was questionable, we'd view the camera, the, the picture of it, and say, yes, that's legitimate. They run the stop arm, and then they get a, send a notice. Now, this has been going on the highway, the Turnpike Authority. If you wanna test that out, go, just take your sticker off tonight as you go through, and, and you'll find out. But, and you'll get a, a bill. You owe them two hundred and fifty dollars. And, or two, whatever it is, two fifty, two seventy-five? Two, ours two fifty on this. But anyway, the Turnpike has only had two appeals. You know, but if you got the video of them doing it, there ain't much to say.
Well, and we, we saw some, those of us on the committees actually saw some demonstrations, and it was easy to see. And you can even stop action, so you can do it frame by frame, where you see the license plate. And the issue is, the license is, right now, in order for there to be a violation, a law enforcement officer has to see the violation. You know, the bus, the bus driver report doesn't, they have to see that. And this, and you have to identify the driver under current law. This is a...
The only way that it works now, Jim mentioned, and it's important, you have to put a cop just about, law enforcement on the bus. You have to have one in the car, when they run it, they stop them, and, and, cause you gotta have proof who's driving it.
And this is still voluntary on the part of the school district. You're not gonna put on every bus. If you, if you have a, a bus that runs out in the country on one-lane gravel road, and you've never had a violation, you're probably not gonna contract for that. But if you live in Wichita, and the Wichita Transportation Director was there, where they have twenty thousand stops a day, and multiple violations every day, they probably will.
He, didn't he want to tell a story about, they just about had one hit recently? Is he the one? Was it him? Oh, Jeff County North, who's there, suburban, about had one hit. Had men for the bus driver, probably would've have. Anyway, I think Jim's reading that committee correctly. That bill says that any money that comes, the, the school gets for at-risk waiting has to be transferred to at-risk fund. Not a big deal.
It's already what they did.
No, they, they aren't, that's what I say, it's not a big deal, cause most of them spend more than they get anyway. Not a big deal. But here's the peanut of that bill. We, you have to approve, an approved list of at-risk programs. And the school district, we have to publish that list and all that, make it available. Then the school district at the end of the year has to tell us, the students, and the, how do I wanna say that, that the results of the students for each program. So in Wichita, you may have thirty, forty different programs. So you'd have, each program, you list the kids, and tell them what the results were. And you'd have to summarize it, cause you couldn't do it individual kid. But, but, you know, kids in that program, here's what they were, here's what, you're gonna have to document each program and each group of students on the at-risk funding.
This continues to be a misunderstanding of how at-risk funding is applied in schools. It all stems from the post-audit report, and I'll be on record again, this, you could develop a list. That would be a very long list, but that requirement, you just, you just think about the two schools you just recognized, in Kansas City, Kansas, and Hayesville. Every day, every hour, there's hundreds of decisions being made about how to move kids in and out of programming, whether it's academic or social, emotional, that now would have to be recorded, so that you can measure whether or not they had impact. How do you know what specifically had impact? Was it a counselor spending time with a kid that was suicidal? And then, and then you, and if the kid didn't commit suicide, that's evidence? This, this is an impossible act, because there's still a misunderstanding that if you implement a program, that program is what has value to it. And there's some of that. There's some of that. But this is, this is still, it's not the issue of what you have to do, it's what the school districts have to do.
Okay. And on top of that, that this, since, since you make decisions on the slot, on the, on the, on the move, and since if something's not working, you're gonna try something else, each one of those at-risk students may have had a half a dozen different interventions, and you can't differentiate what it is. If this part of the law passes, every school will not be in compliance, because it's impossible.
Yeah, it's particularly, it's the reason why. Let me, let me add to that just a little bit. In addition, the board, to be fair, and it's, and it's, it won't work well. You're gonna have to make a, the, the list of approved programs, you're gonna have to do it way back early. So schools, when they get ready to hire people, they need to know that, that it's on the list. So they've got a program, they gotta be sure it's on the list before they hire somebody to fill that role. So the, the timing on this is, is not, there's room for improvement in that area, big time.
And one other thing, Dale, in the last, in the last briefing at the Senate Ed Committee, it was obvious that those senators that don't support public education are only viewing academic performances at risk. They don't accept. And one of the questions that Brad was asked, whenever he was talking about social, emotional, he said, can you guarantee that you can stop every suicide? That was a question that was asked by one of the senators. There's a complete misunderstanding of what at-risk is, and the issues, the major issues of social, emotional development, and crisis, and trauma that students are facing is completely discounted, and these people that were asking questions only look at academic performance. If you're at risk of failing, we can spend money on you any other time we cannot. That's my, again, you've been there more than I have, but that was my reading.
I think you're on target. Let me tell you one, it's more, it's a little bit more challenging. And the hearing's on it, is it tomorrow? Thursday? Thursday. How, the K-12 Budget Committee sponsors Representative Erickson and Williams. And what it does, any student in this reading level, this goes back to what Mr. Porter said about everything, and, and the commissioner about, is just those tests. If you're reading at level one in third grade, then you can go to an accredited private school, and the base amount per pupil will go with you. But what happens is, they take the base amount per pupil away from the district, and they put, give it to the state treasurer. And the state treasurer has to keep individual records for that individual student. And then, and then the, the private school then would receive it. And the, the parent, yeah, the parent will decide where they want it to go. Now, the next step is, is unusual. This, the, the, the year following, you know, in the, in the third, or the fourth, third and fourth grade, the fourth grade kids, if they were level one and two in the fourth grade, they can do the same thing. Now, it gets complicated a little bit more later on. If the student says, no, I wanna go to my public school, but the law allows them to take the at-risk waiting money, it goes to state treasurer, and then the school district and the parent will work out what, how to spend that money. And the parent has final say.
Even though a fourth grader might be reading at grade level, they could still go to some other school?
If they're in grade, if they're in level one or two, the answer is yes.
But level two is grade level, right? Okay.
Now, they don't understand, I don't think, but they, it's been talked about numerous times. Okay, now, the, the, there's a lot of complications with this. And I'm, it also affects department revenue. And because this goes to the state treasurer, and the school is, and the treasurer has to issue it, to the school at the request of the parent, then that becomes a ten ninety-nine issue. And, and so, then it, but they exempted it for Kansas, which they can exempt it from the feds. So, that's another issue. Another issue that's not explained, and this will happen, a, a kid may say, I wanna go to this school, I don't care what school it is. And they set aside the money, take it away from the school district and all that, and set it aside, and then about thirty days later, a kid says, and they're high school kids, we're, we're, elementary, they're not in control, but high school kids still, they control things. I wanna go back to where it was at. I don't wanna go here. There's nothing in the law that tells us what happens then. There is a, now, makes what I said, the money goes to state treasurer, and then the parent will have it sent to some cred school, private school. And then on the at-risk waiting, they can do that, for the, they get that, but the public schools will get just the at-risk waiting. And the parent will decide how they wanna spend that. Then there's a provision that if you don't spend all the money, it'll be carried over and put in the reading readiness fund. But think about it. Then what do you do with it? It, it don't tell you what to do with it, if there's any money, and there will be some money left over. It's normal, with that many people. And it, it is a very complicated bill. Oh, one other provision that I don't think they thought about. It says, and, and there's quite a bit of this going on. I'll, if, it refers to the resident district is where we're gonna take the, the money away from them, and, and for, and the base amount per pupil, put it in the state treasurer. Kid, a kid in Hutchinson, it resides in Hutchinson, goes to school in Bueller. So they'll take the money away from Hutchinson, and the kid not even enrolled there. And it appears, the law says now, you take the higher enrollment of the two preceding years. I think that's superseded. This law, cause when, when they pull, they, when they pull them out, but mechanically, there's a lot of unanswered questions on that bill, a lot of them. We've only scratched the surface.
Well, if they wanna play games like that, we can too. We can lower the cut score, so that everybody's in three and four, and nobody applies.
Well, I tell you what, on, on that issue, Commissioner and I talked about that there or two ago. We've got the highest standards in the, in the nation, according to Nate. Am I right?
Yep.
All right. So, you knew if we have the highest standards in the nation, our test scores were gonna be lower.
Now, you're applying logic.
And, and, but, and that was explained very thoroughly, when was that, last week? But I, I don't know if they picked up on it, but...
Dale, is this only for students that are transferring, or students that are already enrolled?
No, students that are transferring.
Okay.
But Jim... Yeah, but Jim, once you, once you transfer, once you transfer over, then it, it's forever.
Having been on both sides of the aisle, there are certain advantages. And I know it frustrates us, but I step back for a moment, and I try to remember what it was like to be a principal of a, a, a private school. And how this would impact me, and what, how would it impact our school? You know, there's, there's a mission that every school has. Private schools have a must-have, or if they're gonna be successful, a very defined mission. You know, and there is a belief out there that there are people who would go to this school and follow that mission, if indeed, they have the resources. And the only reason they don't go is because they don't have the resources. Many private schools have endowments, have scholarship programs for needy students, you know, that don't have the resources, it's not needy, but don't have the resources. And there is a, a, a sizable belief that better things can happen. So first thing I'd ask you to do is put yourself in, in the, in the position of those that believe that they're actually helping education, you know, students do this. You know, one of the challenges that I used to tell people in non-public schools who are running this is that legislature may in fact put this together, and may in fact provide you an avenue to allow individuals who do not have resources or do not wanna use the resources that they have to go to that school. But what the legislature giveth, the legislature can take away. And if you're a private school, you wanna have consistency of enrollment and consistency of resources. This actually brings in a danger, and if we wanted to close private schools, the best thing we could do is support this. And have an influx of students that they are ill-equipped to serve many times. And it changes the dynamics of, of, of the resources they need to run their school. Right down to the desk, to the book, to the programs, to the teachers. So if, as I used to say, if 150 kids all of a sudden showed up from Northwest High School at Bishop Carroll, and because the legislature gave some advantage economically for them to be there. If that's the reason they're there, is because of that new advantage. When that advantage leaves, and it will eventually leave, because there'll be a backlash, it might be five years or even ten years, but it'll eventually leave. That means that I've established my educational programs to meet the needs of that additional 150 to 200 students, which could be a building, which could be books, could certainly be teachers, certainly be a lot of resources. And if they all of a sudden leave because they're not getting that money, then I've gotta lay off people, I've gotta cut back. You know, there's a, there's a, a trap in it for the private schools. You want the people who support your mission and vision, and are willing to sacrifice for that mission and vision, not those that wanna come because all of a sudden they have an economic benefit. And I know that might not sit well with people in the private school side, but I know that it's about finances. And you might get a windfall of money, but you're gonna deal with a whole different group of kids now, and people who have different expectations. I would prefer to have the people who want to support me than those that are gonna come just because they got a, a financial incentive from the legislature.
Usually when you get...
I don't know if it makes sense to you or not, but I'm trying to look at it both sides. And I'm, I'm fearful that this could be something that would harm some very good schools if they were to take advantage of this under these circumstances.
The other issue that comes along with this, when you get state or federal money, you get a lot of bureaucracy with it.
Well, that's the other thing, you're gonna tell me what to do.
That's right, that's right.
But they don't want that, this, and I, I left that out.
Twenty-five seventy-three, skip that. And this is a required, and you heard about this today, American civics test before you, and prove it before you graduate in high school. Well, that, that sounds a lot simpler, and I imagine it was simple when you talked about it earlier today. But if, you're gonna have to have a reliable, valid test, and have security with it, or it's just a memorization, and, and that isn't what I think what they wanna do. So to validate that, buy a test, validate it, and make it reliable, and where you can defend it in court, 'cause there'll be somebody that wanna challenge you.
Dale, is this the citizenship test? 'Cause in past times, they've used the national citizenship test.
It says some, a hundred questions, something like that test.
Yeah, something like that, don't say that, but something like that's correct.
I think, I don't know how many questions, I don't remember.
Yeah, and anyway, but I think they think it's just, just get it, no big deal, or, you know, Michelle, you and Deena can whip one out this afternoon. Well, it is, you have to validate, it's gotta be reliable and so forth, and, and it's gotta stand the test of, and there, there's some work involved with that. If you buy one off the line and so forth, then the other thing you're gonna have to do, somebody's gotta keep a record where that student passed it or not. 'Cause you got kids that transfer schools every little bit. So you gotta make sure that record system is set up so that kids already passed it. Okay, right quick, I'll skip down to twenty-five eighty-two is Representative Landworth's bill on mental health. And what she does is...
Dale, on that, on that test thing? I know she's getting tired, but, on that, is there accommodation for sped kids or whatever? 'Cause it's tied to high school graduation.
I, I think it's generic enough. My guess is, if it come right down to it, that the state board would have to make that decision. Be my opinion. Anyway, the way, what it is, the waiting is designed, we, we in essence pay 50% of the cost. And that's, that's the majority of it. There's a bill down, on down at the tail end, twenty-six oh-one, that they specify immunization for childcare and for schools. List them. But that isn't particularly new. I'd be glad, try to answer any questions you got. There's a long ways to go. Tomorrow at noon, no, Thursday at noon, we're looking forward to this. We'll do our budget appeal based on what you previously adopted. And the big issue will be the special ed. And this will be the Senate Ways and Means. It's a good committee, good committee, they're good people to talk to, they're caring people. Senator Scoobal, I think Pat Petty's on there, Goddard, and, from Lubet County, and Kirchner from West Sedgwick County. But they're good people.
On that, you, you, are they gonna ask us questions about that dyslexia?
Eh, they, they might.
Because I got people coming.
Well, they need, they are, and, and so, they got new rules over there. And if you wanna sign up for a Subcommittee on Senate Ways and Means, you talked to Carolyn McGinn's office, got a person that records all, does all that. We know there, I know there's five people testifying, and I think they're all on special ed. But the person, the senator you're referring to, he not on the list. Now, sometimes legislators just walk in and they'll, they'll let them talk, 'cause they're special.
So how do we get on the list?
Pardon?
How do we get on the list?
Eh, call Carolyn McGinn's secretary and ask for Carolyn.
Is it too late?
No. See, eh, no, would not be, would not be. But he, he, what he do, your senator friend, he just go tell Scoobal, "I wanna come by and say a few words." And I bet Senator Scoobal, he's not, he don't get all hung up on the rules like that. He's very accommodating.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you. I'm sorry I told you more than you wanted to know.
Okay. Anybody need a quick break, or are we okay to move forward? Huh? Charge on, okay. All right, item number twenty, Agenda item number twenty, is to accept a resolution in support of Public School Week February 24th to 28th. And the resolution is in your, I believe you have one also? I know I have it, do they have a copy?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's a resolution. Do I read it? Eh, it's a resolution to basically support February 24th to 28th, 2020 is Public Schools Week. So it is to support public, public schools, that particular week, which is coming up very, fairly soon. So do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Porter?
I move that Kansas State Board of Education accept the resolution expressing support for Public School Week, February 24th, 28th, 2020.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Deena Horst. All in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to consent, and if you would remember, twenty-one J, we had an adjustment in the dates. We talked about that first thing this morning. So do we have a motion to approve the consent of Janet?
I move that we approve the consent.
We have a motion to approve consent, do we have a second? Mr. McNeese, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, oh, okay. Okay. All right, opposed? Okay, nine zero, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna take a look at board travel. So if you look at the travel list, I believe you have that. See if you have anything that you need to add. Uh, Jim McNeese.
Superintendent Council, that's their water. Brady's gonna be visiting the schools in my district on 27th. And March 2nd, I'm gonna be in Kansas County. Only for one day, not that, third, just the second.
Okay. Other additions or changes? Deena?
I will most likely be doing legislative liaison work next week and the week after, and probably in March as well, so I, I don't know exact dates. Because that will depend upon what's happening.
So we'll approve your work as you report it to Peggy?
If you just approve it for me, yeah.
Okay.
Get in contact with Ms. Peggy.
I'll probably do the same thing, same.
Jim Porter, same thing. Okay, others? Jean?
Could you add March 2nd and 3rd for the Kansas Canon Symposium in Manhattan?
Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Do you have more, or are you moving?
I just remembered one other, that the twenty, I believe it's the 21st, it's a Friday. It's a week from this Friday, that, no, be the last Friday of the month. I will be going to, finally going to Bennington Tesco, to Twin Valley, to visit during an administrator's meeting.
Okay. Now, do we have a motion to approve the travel? Janet Wall, Ben Jones II, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Nine zero. Okay. Just a reminder, tomorrow, real quickly, we will start. I believe Brad's leading us through the discussion. It will be a discussion about the changes in qualified admission and the potential impact that might have on really almost high school coursework, plus maybe graduation. Of course, their changes take place in '24, is that correct? So we're gonna begin that discussion, and after that, we will revisit the computer standards. So, just a reminder for tomorrow. Okay, all right. Then I think we will recess at this time, and we will see you all in the morning. Thank you very much.